I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Ed on Tuesday, August 24th at 7:00 PM. If everyone will please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. I always like to start our meeting reading the mission statement to remind us all of why we're here working together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. This is our first meeting in person in a year and a half now, and this is a new venue for us as well, so thank you for joining us. We are happy to be here with you. We did discover that Zoom ended up being a bit of a silver lining during this time and that we were able to have more attendance with that format. And I know I have parents that even reached out tonight that couldn't find childcare to come. So we do have Nutmeg recording this this evening, and it will be posted on Saturday. But if there is a purpose or a reason to use Zoom, we may still return to that format for some of our meetings, including some of the committees. So I just wanted to say that in advance. I want to also do a roll call this evening, so in case there's new people here who aren't familiar with us, we are at least introducing ourselves. So I will say each person's name, and they can just raise their hand and acknowledge who they are. My name is Deb Schut, and I am the Chair. Jeffrey Fleishman, our Secretary.
Present.
Jackie Blaia.
Present.
Jason Indemnico.
Present.
Laura Young.
Present.
David Cavanaugh.
Present.
Lisa Semenera.
Present.
Those are all of our board members. Now, I'd like to go to our administrators. Dr.
Ms.
No. Our administrators, Dr. Carnamola, our Superintendent; Dr. Nesler Rusak, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning; Mr. Medick, our Director of Human Resources; Ms. Russo, our Business Manager; Ms. Moy, our Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, she will be helping us this evening; and Attorney Ms. Alfano, our Attorney for the Board of Ed. Thank you, everyone. All right, so now getting into the minutes from our last regular monthly meeting, can I have a motion to approve our June 15th, 2021, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Jackie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All right, passes unanimously, Shirley. Secondly, our Board of Education special meeting that was held on August 3rd, 2021, can I please have a motion to approve those minutes?
No, move.
All right, Jason, thank you. Second. Second by Laura. All in favor? Aye. Again, passes unanimously. Thank you, Shirley. This next section, Communication from the Public, is here as an opportunity for us to listen to you. We appreciate and know that many of you have come here to speak to us tonight, so I just want to be clear that this really, truly is your time to speak to us. It isn't a conversational aspect, so if you do ask a question, we unfortunately don't have the opportunity to answer your question at this time of the meeting. However, as we move to the actual old business on the agenda, hopefully you all have hard copies in your hand, perhaps we'll be able to answer some of your questions at that time. Each person that comes up to the mic will have up to three minutes to present their comments. We did also have a stack of written-in comments for people who weren't able to attend this evening, so in all fairness, what I'd like to do is alternate. So we'll start with one person, and it's really just the honor system of coming forward when you would like to speak. Then I will have Shirley read a written comment, and we'll alternate in that way. So is there someone who would like to start us off?
Do you want to mention the time and make sure they state their name?
Oh, yes, thank you. Jeff is reminding me, we are in person doing this again. When you do come to the microphone, if you could please state your first and last name and your address for the record, so that we can make note of that, try to be clear. If we don't understand, we'll just ask you to repeat it. And we are ready if someone would like to speak first.
Not yet.
Okay, sir, come on up.
I did the three minutes, right?
You have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Vialante. I live on Temer River Circle. I have a daughter here in the school that is a sophomore. A few years ago, I was granted the permission to present an active shooter response training program to the teachers, the educators of the Avon School System. I was under the former Superintendent Carrie Mall. I was told to put it on hold until they hired the new superintendent, which is Dr. Carnamola. She was gracious enough to grant me a meeting a couple of years ago with her, the former Chief of Police, and the former Lieutenant Kelly Walsh, who no longer with the department. I made my case about what I've been doing. I'm a national trainer for the Alice Active Shooter Training Program. It's the oldest active shooter program in the country. It's been around since 2001. It's been taught in over 4,000 school systems across the country. And my offer to the Avon School System, because I have a vested interest because my daughter goes to the school system, was to teach this for free. So the advice that Lieutenant Walsh gave to Dr. Carnamola was that we shouldn't do this, we should just continue to do lockdown only. And when I asked Lieutenant Walsh, what happens if a shooter breaches the door where the children are locked down in a classroom? And she had no answer for me. She changed the subject. And that's how the meeting went. I asked several questions, and they had no answer for it. So my offer is still good. I'd like to teach this training program, which has been taught, again, all over the country. I've taught in 12 different states. I've taught about 25 different school systems, as well as churches, corporate buildings. I've taught mall security, and so on and so forth, and whether an active shooter program can be taught. And I'd still like to offer this free of charge to the Avon School System and have all the teachers come and take the training. You know, one of the things that was told to me was that we have an SRO now, a School Resource Officer, which is great. I'm glad that we do. But my question to them was, well, what happens if the SRO is in the high school and a shooting takes place in one of our other school systems, one of our other schools, the middle school or Thompson Brook? And again, no answer for me. So as parents that are here tonight, my pitch is, if you knew that there was something I could show the teachers that would help mitigate injury and save lives, and it wouldn't cost the taxpayers a dime, wouldn't you want me to come in and do that?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. I will ask that the audience please refrain from clapping so that we can move through and we're not talking to one another at this time. Shirley, if you would read the first written comment, please.
The first email I have is from Hillary Horgan, who is an Avon resident. She writes, Dear Avon Board of Education Members, my name is Hillary Horgan. I am a mother of two boys ages six and nine, both of them attend Pine Grove School. My husband and I have been Avon residents for 12 years, and we feel so lucky to call this wonderful town home. I'm writing to you all to express my support for masking in schools and my concern for folks who wish to undermine or circumvent the mask requirements. Let me start by saying that I get it. I understand we are all sick of this virus. I know we are tired of wearing masks. A couple of months ago, when people were getting vaccinated before the spread of the Delta variant, I thought to myself that maybe our kids would be safe in schools without masks this school year. I was hopeful. But here is what we know to be true. We know that the Delta variant is here and on track to get worse. We know that the Delta variant is much more contagious and much more easily transmissible than the early strains of the virus. And most importantly, we know that the Delta variant is affecting children much more than the previous strains. It is making our children sick, and in most cases, it is killing them. Oh, in some cases, sorry. It is killing them. If that isn't a wake-up call, I don't know what is. My family is from Florida, and I have three nephews attending public school in Palm Beach County, where they are not allowed to require masks, but they do strongly recommend them. In just under two weeks, there are over 700 confirmed cases in their school district. Some teachers have died of COVID next door in Broward County. It's terrifying. But here is what else we know. We know that masks work even against the Delta variant. We know that with certainty that everyone wearing masks will keep our children much safer. Because of our mask requirement last school year, that COVID cases were kept to a minimum, and there was zero transmission in our schools. If we are dealing with a much more contagious version of the virus, why would we change anything? I'm writing to you all today because I'm fully supporting the mask requirement in Avon Public Schools. This is the right thing to do. I'm also concerned that some folks are trying to opt out of the requirement. This is dangerous. I would not feel safe if there were multiple children in my boys' classrooms not wearing masks. We should not be opening up our children and teachers to this unnecessary risk. Please, keep the mask requirement until Delta is under control and we can begin vaccinating younger children. Thank you for keeping our children healthy and safe. Sincerely, Hillary Horgan.
Thank you, Shirley. Do we have another person in attendance that would like to speak?
I'm Catherine Lewis, and I live at 54 Lord Davis Lane, and I won't be talking about masks tonight. I'm going to offer an observation, and that's the level of disrespect you just showed the audience in telling them they couldn't clap. They can clap. It's part of freedom of speech. We elected you to this board, and we'll clap when we want, okay? And I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to say, you're not the boss of us, and you're not our children's guardians, Deborah Schut. You recently said in the media that you're not our children's guardians, and if my husband and I drop dead, you wouldn't be our children's guardians. Get on the clue butts, my friend. You don't know the law, and you're not our children's guardians. There's your lawyer from Shipman &amp; Goodman, and she can tell you, in no way, shape, or form, is the Board of Education ever our children's guardian. When our children are in school, the school is in loco parentis. That's the term. So the school has some authority over our children, but the Board of Education is not our children's guardian. And you, as the Chairman of the Board, that's a jaw-dropping statement and is frightening. It's everything people fear with democratic socialism. What a clueless statement. Please, Lord Almighty. Now, like I said, I'm not here to talk about my masks, but good Lord, woman. Now, what I am here to talk about is some scary statements recently made by the Board of Education. And I'm an independent voter, but I am an expert witness. I do litigation for my living. I've testified all over the country, and I'm qualified as an expert witness. People pay me a lot of money. I'm doing this for free here tonight for you, so listen up. And as you know, I helped seat you on this board in 2015 by overturning the Republicans who didn't want to hire social workers, so I'm a free-range person here. A year ago, one of these board members said on the record, and you guys can Google her statements, that her primary agenda as a board member was to support Black Lives Matter. Are you kidding me? Look at your mission statement. That is not why you're sitting up here on the board. You're supposed to be furthering education and representing children in this community. Are you kidding me, people? You're supposed to be furthering education of our children. Our children are getting ready to come back to school. I asked my 16-year-old, are you excited? He's an honors student. My other child graduated, he's a special education student. Both of them deserve to do the very best they can in this school system. The best they can. They don't deserve equity. They don't deserve to both do the very same. They deserve to do the best they can. The best they can. Each and every student, the best they can, okay? In June, a bunch of students did great in Avon. A bunch of students did great. Our baseball team, our baseball team that didn't do very well for years, they almost beat the state champions. A bunch of track kids went to the national champions. We had SAT people that did great. We had people winning writing awards. We had track stars. We had, and this is only in the high school, did we hear about any of them? No. We heard about somebody who made a pride flag over and over and over again. By the way, my kids didn't do any of that special stuff, not any of it, but I was proud of all those kids. We didn't hear anything about them. Not one thing about any of them. We had a softball team that almost couldn't field a team, and they made it through the whole month. We didn't hear anything about any of them. I'd like to hear about all of those kids. I'm proud of all of them. So I'm sick of this drama, this political stuff.
That's been three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I say, get out of the way. Vote, vote, vote. November is coming. Get a new chair. Who doesn't think she's the guardian of our kids? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will have another red comment, and then Ms. Moses, if you'd like to come next.
This next email is from Dr. Kevin Barron, who is an Avon resident and Avon parent. He writes, Dear members of the Avon Board of Education, I am a parent of three children in three different schools, Avon High School, Avon Middle School, and Pine Grove School. I am a board-certified practicing internal medicine physician for Pro Health Physicians in Plainville, Connecticut. Additionally, I am the hospice medical director at McLean Home in Simsbury, Connecticut. I have witnessed firsthand the impact of COVID on my patients, the families, my employees, and my colleagues. I wish I could paint for you the most realistic picture possible of a patient dying from this horrific virus. The exasperation I feel on a daily basis towards those who refuse to get vaccinated has overwhelmed me. My wife and I and our eighth and 10th graders are fully vaccinated. My fourth grader is ineligible due to her age, but she will be the first in line to receive a vaccine once it's available to her. I constantly worry that one of us will bring home the Delta strain and infect her. Mask wearing can prevent this. So simple. Such a small sacrifice to make, a selfless gift to others. In my practice, the patients who are becoming infected now seem to be those who are gathering with family and friends without masks in small indoor spaces. These conditions are similar to those of our schools. I think it would be irresponsible and factifying to pretend that anything other than wearing masks in school is the right decision. As parents, my wife and I have abided by every suggestion put forth by you, our board and superintendent, these past 18 months. Fortunately, not one of our children in three different schools last year was quarantined or tested positive. We believe this was a result of following the guidelines of the CDC, our governor, and you. We believe in science, and as you do the same. We urge you to not be swayed by those who are anti-vaccination or anti-mask. On Tuesday, August 24th, you will hear from those demanding that the mask mandate be reversed. They will beg of you to listen to their message, and I am begging you to listen to mine. Masking works. Out of respect for the majority of families who do not mind a very small sacrifice of having our students wear masks at school, we ask you to put into place a firm plan of disciplinary action for any student attending school who refuses to wear a mask when it's expected. Keep our kids in school. Continue to support the mask mandate. Keep our kids healthy. Continue to support the mask mandate. Keep our first responders and essential workers safe. Continue to support the mask mandate. With gratitude for your service to our town, Kevin and Robin Barron, 182 Woodford Hill Street.
Thank you, Shirley. I think Ms. Moses was up first. I'm sorry.
My name is Linda Moses, and I live at 31 Ryan Woods Drive. In addition to being a parent who's had children in the Avon schools, I'm also a school social worker. I want to first acknowledge that there are very strong feelings on every side of this argument, and I would really hope that those sides could be expressed in a respectful manner. I appreciate the amount of work board members do and understand that it's not always recognized. I understand and respect that there are vastly different opinions. I worked in a school throughout the pandemic year and was, you know, quarantined several times and exposed several times, and worked with kids who sometimes struggled with wearing masks. But I really believe that the most safe and appropriate response to what's going on now with the Delta variant is to continue to have masks mandatory in schools. I think it's how we keep our community safe, and it's a way of showing respect and care for one another, and I support doing what's scientifically indicated. And I thank everybody who's here tonight, and I thank everybody for caring enough to be here, and I hope that this can be a respectful meeting.
Thank you very much. One moment. Normally, our Communication from the Public section is 15 minutes long, but I think we can recognize that there's more people that would like to speak. Can I have a show of hands for those of you that came prepared to speak tonight? All right, plus with the written comments. So I'm going to ask the board if I make a motion that we extend another half an hour. Would the board be comfortable with that? Okay? So moved? Jackie Moose, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. So we will extend, and now, since we just had a verbal comment, I'll have Ms. Moy read a written comment, and then I'll have you next, sir.
This next message is from Jennifer Huber, who is an Avon resident and PGS parent. She writes, Dear Dr. Carnamola and board members, I'm writing to express support for masks, distance, cleaning, cohort, et cetera, policies that maximize the health and safety of students, faculty, administrators, and staff, as well as the greater community. I have read the blueprint for return emails, as well as guidance from the state and the governor's statement on masking in September. To the extent that the administration has room to develop local rules under guidance from the governor and State Board of Education throughout the academic year, I support policies that prioritize health over other concerns. A strategy to minimize the spread of COVID and existing forthcoming variants is prudent for public health. Moreover, effective policies driven by public health will provide the greatest probability of keeping all children learning in person all year. Remote learning is untenable. I appreciate, oh, I'm sorry, I anticipate children will attend school in person this year with the greatest care taken to ensure their safety and that of everyone else. I have been informed that there are parents advocating for optional or non-medically necessary exemptions for masks in Avon Public Schools. This note serves as a counterpoint. I'm grateful for your service and commitment to our children and our community. Thank you sincerely, Jennifer Huber.
Thank you, Ms. Moy. Next, sir, it's your turn.
My name, sorry, my name is Marcelo Maldonado. I'm a general dentist. I went to UConn, graduated 2008. UConn's one of the best schools in the country. We do medical school for the first two years. I own two businesses, looking to open a third. I have three small kids.
Your home address, sir, I apologize.
Is 25 Fon Run, Avon.
Thank you.
I'm here, I'm listening to these pre-selected emails, and I can't help but say it's so typical. And I tell you, I would really challenge the people selecting these emails to put every email publicly, because I'd really like to see what other people have to say, because I see a very common theme with these emails, and it's the same, excuse me, it's the same thing over and over again. And it's very typical that we see this in the media, and this isn't my main point, I had to just comment on this. There are many, many, many medical and dental professionals all around the country who are not for mask mandates and various types of things. These people all have a scientific background, scientific education, understand the nature of studies and the nature of viruses and all these types of things. And there's only one point of view that gets a platform anywhere, and I'm seeing that right now, put right in everybody's face. And we're all smart enough to see through that. Everybody can see through that. Now, a number of things I've heard, I've heard a number of things. I've heard a number of emotional polls, people want to, you know, people are dying. We understand that. It's very sad that people are dying, but there's this virus, and it's a reality, and isn't going away. I've heard people say tonight that masks work. And I'll tell you, there's a study out of Canada, it's called the Waterloo Study, and if anyone wants to message me after the fact, I have a link for it. I tried to find the link online through Google and regular search engines, could not find it, had to go through Twitter to find it. And if you do Google this study, what you're going to see are all the headlines. MSNBC, CNN, ABC, you're going to see all the headlines. And the headlines, believe it or not, they, Waterloo Study makes the case for, you know, better masks, basically, KN95 masks and the like, okay? What the study found was that cloth masks, like the ones our kids are going to wear to school that have Darth Vader on them, Paw Patrol, Spider-Man, they're 10% effective, if that, okay? So we have a virus that's everywhere, and we have a mask that's quote 10% effective in any one given social situation. These kids are going to be in school all day, every day. They don't do anything. The blue surgical masks? 12% effective. 12%. Now, if you're lucky enough to have a properly fitted KN95 mask with no gaps, you're 65%. That's not too bad. Now we're talking science, okay? That's 65%. That's not too bad, okay? But the study also said that a well-ventilated room is better than any of those masks. Now, of course, we're going to hear, okay, so that must mean that a well-ventilated room and a KN95 mask is better. I'm not finished. I don't want to hear that. The bottom line is, if we're going to follow the science, we're going to take a look and see that the reason why we didn't have kids in quarantine, we didn't have problems, is because studies have shown over and over again that these children are not affected by the virus. They are not affected by it. There are no symptoms. So we have a population of people who have no symptoms and are not affected by the virus, and we're all in here saying that.
Please wrap up your extended time. Thank you.
Liberty and justice for all, wearing masks that we're forced to wear that don't even work. That is crazy. That is insane, okay? Now, you are asking our children to wear something on their faces which is unnatural, that they come home with food cake on it.
Excuse me, sir.
No, I'm not done.
We need to respect everyone's time.
And their mouths are wet when they come home. It's not sanitary, okay? So the bottom of the line is, we're not following the science. We're following the politics, okay? We are disagreeing about how to mitigate a public health issue, and these issues, these arguments that we're hearing, if we're really talking about the science, it does not follow, does not hold water. We should not be obligating.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Our children to give up a portion of their childhood to possibly maybe protect some adult who has now had the ability to be vaccinated and wear any kind of mask they choose. It's not right, it's not fair, and it's not the norm in this country either. This is more of a Northeast California, New York type of thing.
Point of order. Thank you.
So that's it, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
We all see. We all see what's happening.
All right, next, I have a written comment. Shirley, if you can read, they've been submitted in order, and that's the order in which we're reading them.
This is from Jamie Polheinas, who is an Avon resident and Avon parent. She writes, Dear members of the Avon Board of Ed and Superintendent, I would like to request that the statement below be read. And she writes, My Ms. Jamie Polheinas, and I am writing as a mother of two elementary school children in the Avon Public Schools. I am tremendously grateful to you and the entire district for so closely abiding by the CDC, state, and regional health department's safety protocols that allowed my children to be in school all of last year. My daughters both had a fantastic experience with in-person learning in our schools despite the unprecedented challenges we have faced and are still facing with regards to this ongoing worldwide pandemic. You made this possible through your thoughtful consideration of the entire APS student body, their families, and our community. My kids are five and six, they aren't bothered by wearing masks, they can breathe just fine and are excited about starting another fun and safe school year. The adjustment to wearing masks at school and out in the community has not been difficult, and they understand why it has been necessary. I want to acknowledge that both virulence and transmission, fortunately, to date have been low in younger children. However, with variants increasingly circulating in our unvaccinated children, the long-term uncertainty of this trend, and the potential for long-lasting effects of SARS-CoV-2 warrant conservative decision-making, the body of evidence clearly indicates masks are an important tool in preventing the spread, and it seems to me a small thing we can do to help protect everyone in our schools and wider community. Thank you for all you have done and will do this year to keep our kids safe and in school. Sincerely, Jamie Polheinas.
Thank you, Shirley. There was a woman over here. There was a woman over here.
Yes, my name is Tracy Beloy, my address is 61 Riley Lane. Can I get your name? Tracy Beloy. That's awfully dark, I'm going to read this. I'm going to pass this to you guys after, if you want to take a look at it, and I'm sure this statement, on every box of masks you buy, it reads, "These masks are not personal protective equipment and are not intended as replacement or substitutes for personal protective equipment. These products are not intended for medical use or to prevent any disease or illness. Each mask is intended for single use only, disregard immediately after use." So you tell me, what is this mask doing for my child, your child, or anybody? It's not doing anything. You're kidding yourself if you really think this mask is going to save your child, okay? You guys talk about this Delta variant and its contagiousness, I understand that, we all appreciate that. All we also hear is get your child vaccinated, get your child vaccinated. For a vaccination that's not fully approved by the FDA, has no.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. Do you know the long-term effects of this? Have you read about the heart inflammation that affects primarily teenage boys?
Eighteen of them in Connecticut.
Yes, am I going to stab my son with that? Hell no, hell no, okay? And for all the people who think that a vaccine is going to save your child, and they're not going to become infected, or you, that is incorrect. You can just as easily get the virus and spread the virus, vaccinated or not. That is true. I have a friend of mine whose son contracted COVID, him and his buddies were together, eight out of 11 contracted it, five of them were vaccinated of those eight, okay? The grandparents got it, they were vaccinated. Yes, it may help decrease the symptoms if you do become infected, but it does not prevent you from getting the virus, it does not prevent you from passing it on to somebody else. So let's stop kidding ourselves, okay? Again, every package of masks you buy, these ones you passed out to me today when I walked in here, it's not saving me from getting any virus, it's not going to save our children either.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moy.
The next message is from Marcy Kane and Robert Kagan, Avon residents. They write, We are writing to support implementation of the mask mandate in Avon Schools. The science is clear, masks help control the spread of COVID.
Please be respectful of every comment that is being shared, we are respectful of you.
Masks help control the spread of COVID and its more lethal Delta variant. We understand that individuals who want to unmask their children may be at the board meeting. Out of concern for our health and others, we have no choice but to stay away. Their efforts are misguided, selfish, and dangerous. No one is forcing their children to be masked. These parents have the option of homeschooling, they can even form pods and educate all the unmasked children within the anti-mask contingent. A mask mandate must be implemented and enforced. No child or teacher should have to be in a room of unmasked super spreaders. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Marcy Kane and Robert Kagan.
Thank you. Do we have another one?
Hello, my name's Chloe Noff, I live in 18 North Grich Drive. I'm a proud graduate of Avon High School, I love this town. I wanted to, I wanted to state this because I've been wanting to say this for a long time. I'm 23 years old, and I know it's unorthodox for a 23-year-old in this climate to think this way, but I strongly believe that there has been a point way back where masks have become less of a public health concern and more political theater, and I think it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moy.
The next email is from Erin Sullivan, Avon resident. She writes, Dear members of the Avon Board of Education, I am an Avon resident and parent of four children who will be attending Avon Public Schools this fall. Three of my boys, who do not yet qualify for vaccination, will be at Pine Grove School, and one who is vaccinated will be starting 7th grade at AMS. I'm writing today to voice my support for universal masking in the schools this upcoming school year, and to express my concern over medical mask exemptions, which are allowed under Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 13A. I am extremely concerned that many in the anti-masking community will seek out medical exemptions to circumvent the mask mandate that the governor has put in place, and the guidance of the Farm and Valley Health District, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the State Department of Public Health, and the CDC, who have all recommended that all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, remain masked due to the Delta variant and the increased spread and transmission rates in our state. I'm also extremely concerned that immunocompromissari, individuals who may actually need such an exemption, will be put in even greater risk if mask exemptions are erroneously granted to all who apply, simply because they wish for their children to remain unmasked. I'm wondering what parameters have been created to determine who qualifies for a medical mask mandate, and if there will be strict guidelines about what type of medical mask exemptions will be accepted by Avon Board of Ed. At the start of the last school year, I was very hesitant about sending my children back to school for in-person learning, but recognized that after the four months of remote learning and lots of frustration, tears on both my children and my part, that in-person learning was best both for their education, as well as for their social, emotional well-being. I also fully admit that sending my children back to school full-time in masks also made me concerned. I was worried how it would impact my very anxious and shy kindergartner, or how a mask would impact my 6th grader socially, or how my 3rd grader might tolerate being in a mask for almost six hours a day, five days a week. The amazing thing was, after some initial whining and worrying on their part prior to the start of school, they all rose to the occasion, and they, for the most part, remained unfazed by the mitigation strategies created to keep them safe. My husband and I talked with them a great deal about the reason for the mask, and the desk shields, and the hand washing, and the science behind it, prior to the start of school, and as a result, all four of my boys, including my preschooler, rose to the occasion, and without complaint, wore their masks daily. I would often have to remind them when they got to the car at pickup that they could remove the mask, as they frequently forget that they were even wearing them. As a result of the mitigation strategies put in place last year, there were no school transmissions. Each one of my three children enrolled in APS had a case in his class and a week. We quarantined tested, and remember, five weeks.
Okay, Shirley, we'll have to pause there in order to respect the three minutes. But these will be added to our minutes online, so they will still be attached. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please.
Through the chair, if I may, I'm sorry, hi. Can you speak? I'm maybe the only one.
I'm having a hard time.
I'm having a hard time hearing some of you, and so, Dr. Maldonado, I believe, we were able to hear well because he was louder, but some of you, it's, I don't mean that a bad way, some of you it's hard to hear, and then honestly, that's why, if you could not clap, it would be great, because as soon as you start clapping, I can't hear a word that they're saying, not because we don't want you to be happy. Thank you.
My name is Kate Buffon, I live at 33 Paper Chase Trail. I have two children, one, thank God, only two and a half, and the other one, four and a half, she's in preschool. To be blunt, mask mandates feel like you or the district are essentially saying that you don't trust us, the parents. We, the parents, know how to protect our kids, we, the parents, know what's best for our children. If a parent wants their child to wear a mask, for whatever reason, they are free to do so. They want protection, okay? They could fear that their child might catch COVID at school and spread it to the rest of the family, to grandma, et cetera, okay? Please have your child wear a mask. That parent should be free to do whatever it is to protect their child and their family. As for my husband and I, and many other Avon parents, we feel that being forced to wear a mask all day will do more harm than good to our children. My daughter, my daughter suffers from severe allergies and has a very difficult time breathing when her mask is on. Last school year, she would come home complaining of feeling very tired. Imagine, a four-year-old tired, have you ever heard that? I know I haven't. And what's funny is, I haven't seen that tired four-year-old this entire summer. She went to an amazing summer camp for a few weeks, completely indoors, each day almost as long as a school day, where masks were optional. The owner of the camp trusted the parents. If the parent wanted their child to wear a mask, that child wore one. If the parent did not want the child in a mask, the camp instructors and other kids were able to see the beautiful smiles on those maskless little faces. This past school year, she would also complain of headaches, or as she would put it, my head is bouncing. Fatigue and headaches, her doctor said it was most likely due to her not getting enough oxygen. Studies have shown that when wearing a mask, oxygen levels can be reduced anywhere from 5 to 20%. My skin crawled when I heard that. My daughter would also tell me, in her own four-year-old way, that the mask blocks her peripheral vision when learning how to read and write. Her tiny face with a one-size-fits-all-childrens mask, trying to learn how to write her name, they have it rough as it is. That brings me to my last statement. Research has shown that it is critical for children in preschool and kindergarten who are still learning phonemes to see how words and sounds are formed. She's struggled, she's behind, she started out the 2020 school year with anxiety, even before she was forced to wear a mask. She's by nature a cautious, sensitive little girl. She was not able to see her new classmates and new teachers' faces. That did not help her ease her anxiety, it obviously increased it, as I'm sure it did for many children. Is mental health no longer a concern? On September 30th, give parents the choice about masking our children all day at school. I sincerely try to understand the concern and respect and the opinions that other parents have. I would hope that they and you will respect and understand mine. We all have our own concerns and opinions, because each child is unique. It would be my hope that each parent can choose what is best for their child, whether that's wearing a mask or not wearing one. Please give us the right to make the choice that best suits our individual situations. We can all protect our children in the way we see it best, and all together coexist without sacrificing their health or ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moy, our next.
This is a mail from Elsa Corino. She writes, Good evening, I am unable to attend Tuesday's meeting, and I'd like to reach out to you in regards to the meeting. This is such a challenging topic, and I understand both sides of the situation. I am the mother of two beautiful children, a typical 14-year-old boy, and a very mediocre, mentally complex seven-year-old daughter. She has a rare form of epilepsy and many other challenges and disabilities. My daughter is unable to wear masks. COVID has been so hard for so many people. I can't speak for everyone, but only from my own experiences. My daughter was able to attend school successfully without getting sick. The staff did such an amazing job keeping her in safe situations and cleaning and sanitizing. My son, on the other hand, had such a hard time with COVID and mask-wearing. He would come home from school, often miserable with headaches. He was uncomfortable, and it affected his concentration. He developed very bad acne in the areas of the space where the mask was touched. He became very depressed, and it's been very difficult. He is very upset with the idea that he has to wear a mask again. Even though plans have been placed for one month, it is very concerning that the mandate will continue. There has to be some kind of middle ground for these kids. They need to have access to fresh air and a helping environment. I realize the complexities of this matter. I pray that perhaps the school board can come up with some kind of creative solution. Get the kids outside in the masks less. Sincerely, Elsa.
Thank you. Is there another public comment? Please come, the woman in the dress, yep.
Hi, my name is Wando Afrika, I'm a mother of five children, two are Avon High School graduates, and three are currently in the school system. Where is the evidence that masks are safe for kids? Are masks considered a medical device with no safety testing having been done? Why is the US the only country masking kids? And why is Connecticut one of only a number of states with this cool mask mandate? Or are masks considered part of a dress code? Certainly, it does not seem appropriate to require them as such, but they are a piece of cloth. How long are you willing to mask children, to restrict their breathing, and hinder their development and their education? What is the metric by which masks will be removed? What is the specific threshold at which masks will not be required? I do not consent to the masking of my children and request parental choice. I am hoping you will understand that I am speaking to you with love. It is with the love I have for my own children and for all children. My life has been dedicated to children, being an adoption and foster care caseworker directly out of college, followed by being a preschool teacher, then mother of my own children, and a librarian. Everything I do is out of love and concern for my children. To me, it utterly breaks my heart and feels abusive to mask children. I feel like the worst possible mother when I send my children to school to mask for six to seven hours each day. I cannot in good conscience ask my children, or any children, to do this again. There is no metric that exists as to when the mask will be removed. At the very least, if a metric or guidepost existed as to when it would end, at least an end could be in sight, yet there is none. Clearly, following science has gone out the window, as there is not a single study that supports masking children. The proven efficacy of masking children does not exist, yet somehow masking is being done in the name of protection from COVID, when it is known that masks do not help and children are at incredibly low risk anyway, virtually zero. I am beyond confused why there is no risk-benefit analysis done to assess children and masking in schools. We are ignoring every negative repercussion of masking in the name of COVID protection, when it isn't even shown that masking works or is safe. How can we continue to harm our children in the absence of such data and just in the name of fear? We are destroying our kids, their world, and their hopes for the future. Every day, we face fear in our lives. Every day, there are risks and we face them. Do a quick risk analysis, make a decision, and move forward. Often, this includes such things as driving in a car, which is much riskier for children than COVID. We cannot protect our children from everything for their whole lives. Sadly, things happen, so often completely out of our control, but we choose to live, to interact, to move forward, and make the most of our time here on earth. The argument has become that we are only doing what we are told. Well, when do we stand up and say enough is enough? When do we say our children simply deserve to breathe? At the very minimum, accommodations and out-of-the-box thinking could happen in our schools. Can we create classrooms of students whose parents do not wish them to be masked? Can we let parents choose whether to mask their own children and sign waivers if need be? Can there be true data shared with families about the low risk that children actually face from COVID? How in good conscience can we allow people to live in such fear?
Your time is up, please.
I can't let our children, I'm almost done, enjoy life again. Masking is a big deal, it interferes with communication, understanding, academics, and breathing. And for those who have suffered previous trauma, it can be completely debilitating. Stand up for our children and let them breathe. Thank you.
Ms. Moy.
This is from a parent who is a doctor, Jason Cutsman. He writes, To the members of the Avon Board of Education, I am unable to attend Tuesday night's Board of Ed meeting, but would like to follow, like the following statement read for the public record. My name is Jason Cutsman, and I am a physician working in urgent care here in Avon. We see more patients and perform more COVID tests than anyone else in town on a daily basis, and I've been working full-time in this location since before the pandemic started. I would like to speak very forcefully in favor of having our children wear masks in school as they did last year. It is inarguable that wearing masks prevents the transmission of viral respiratory. The flu, the data simply, the data simply cannot be debated. What has been argued, that children do not appear to be as strong a vector for the virus as adults, that language and social development are hindered by having one space covered, and that children as a group do not get as ill as adults. These points are well-taken, however, much of the basis for these statements come from last year's school year and the beginning of the pandemic. The Delta variant, which is now the dominant strain here in Connecticut, has absolutely changed the playing field. I've seen a huge uptick in childhood cases of COVID in just the last few weeks.
in just the last few weeks. It is undeniably more transmissible in children than the original strain. Delta is also emerging that it is making kids sicker. The greater Dallas area ran out of pediatric ICU beds earlier this month because of the increase in pediatric COVID cases. Sick kids who needed admission to the intensive care units of their local hospitals. I will freely allow that language and social development are hindered by wearing masks, but aren't they equally hindered if our schools and classrooms need to close routinely due to an increase in frequency of COVID cases? Shouldn't we do everything we can do to keep the... Masks will reduce the risk of kids passing this on to their classmates and teachers. They will not prevent all cases, just as the vaccines will not prevent all cases. They will, however, reduce the likelihood that your child gets my or your neighbor's child sick. More likely, they will reduce the likelihood that your child or my child will pass it to another child who will then get their immun... I'm sorry, immunocompromised family member or their elderly family member very sick. Masks are the seatbelts of the pandemic. You do not know that they will save someone you love, so you wear them all, even if uncomfortable. By here that we should take away the seatbelts for our children is insulting me and all the other healthcare workers who need to get involved whenever someone, child or adult, gets sick. Every time someone gets COVID, seeks care for testing or because of the symptoms, medical assistants, nurses, PAs, physicians, the folks who clean the medical facilities, the ambulance...
Okay, Shirley. Thank you very much. That also concludes that 30-minute timeframe that we had given. Could I have a show of hands of how many others had intended to speak? We do have a second public comment section. At this time, does the board want to continue now? Or should we continue at the second segment?
I would like to make a motion to continue now.
For another 15 minutes, say?
15 minutes at a time.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Who would like to go next? Please come forward.
Hello. My name is Liz Summerhorn. I live at 5 West Lindberg. I have four young kids. They're eight, five, three, and one. I am very concerned about my kids wearing masks this school year. When I first prepared words to tonight, I wrote three minutes of all the reasons why I was concerned. But then I realized that nothing that I could say to you matters at all because you guys don't seem to have any power to make these decisions for our schools. So I wanted to spend my three minutes asking you why we don't have local control here in Avon. I listened to Lamont's COVID briefing last week live on Facebook. Someone asked him to justify his town-by-town approach instead of statewide mandates. He said, around minute 49, "That some towns are highly vaccinated and some towns aren't", and this was his quote. "So I think I'll give a little more discretion because I think that the mayors know their communities pretty well." Why doesn't that apply to school districts? And why aren't you, the Board of Education, screaming about that? Over the past two months, I've been writing emails to you guys, my principal, the Health Department, the Town Council, and even the library staff. I was including anyone I could think of, and the answer is always the same. "Thank you for your email. We have no control. We're following orders." Eighteen months ago, I get it. Nobody knew what was going on at that point. But at this point, that answer is not good enough anymore. Eighteen months into this pandemic, it's time to take control of our town back and make decisions for Avon based on what's going on in Avon. I keep hearing the governor say things like, "In Mississippi, in Alabama", "We are not in Mississippi, and we are not Alabama. We are Avon. We need to be acting locally and reacting and not reacting to nationwide headlines that have nothing to do with our local situation." So, please, demand local control from the governor so you can start doing again the job that we elected you to do. I'll also say that I'm very much opposed to masking little kids, especially at this point in the pandemic when all the information and the data that we have. We know that COVID barely affects kids. We know that kids aren't super spreaders, and we know that the teachers are vaccinated. We know that our community has reached herd immunity. In Avon, we're currently at 75.5% total population fully vaccinated. And 80% of our total population has initiated the vaccine. That is well above herd immunity. Our adult population, who are the ones that have the real risk factors for COVID, is 89% fully vaccinated and 93% has initiated the vaccine. I'm not sure how you can expect to get any better than that. COVID is never going to be zero in America. We're never going to be 100% vaccinated. So I just wonder what the magic number is that we have to get to before it's acceptable to unmask the kids. We had 30 cases in the last reporting period in Avon. That's 30 cases out of 18,000 people over two weeks. Our narrative of "wear a mask to protect others" is no longer relevant. Everyone who wants to be vaccinated is vaccinated, including myself and my husband. Adults in school buildings are vaccinated. Even if my child did somehow bring COVID into the school, he's not going to get his vaccinated teacher sick. That's how vaccines work. And even if the teacher does get a breakthrough case, the chances of that ending up in anything other than a mild case of COVID is negligible. I have little kids. It's my understanding that no one on the board, or Ned Lamont, has young kids. Therefore, you don't actually know what it's like to put a mask on a three-year-old or a kindergartner. Thank you.
Ms. Moy, are you ready?
Yes. Next email is from Annie Simpson, Avon resident and APS parent. Dear members of the board, my name is Annie Simpson and have been an Avon resident for the past five years. I want to first thank you all for your hard work and commitment to our community and our children. In the past 18 months, you have been challenged and thrown hurdles, and you still manage to keep our teachers, kids, administration, staff, and the rest of our community safe. So thank you for your tremendous efforts. My five-year-old daughter will be entering kindergarten at PGS this year and attended RBS for pre-K the past two years. You can imagine the excitement, but also questions and concerns she is bringing up about the upcoming school year, like how does the bus know where to take her? Who her teacher is? If she has any friends in her class? And where she'll be eating lunch, et cetera? But there's been no mention of wearing a mask. I reminded her that she'll need to wear one, and it didn't even faze her, just okay. Masks have become second nature to our kids. They are fully aware that there is a germ, and we need to protect ourselves from it. They understand that masks are necessary to stay healthy, just like backpacks are necessary to keep school supplies in. From a parent's perspective, I strongly urge you to make the right choice. A smart choice to continue to mandate masks throughout the school year in order to keep our children safe. We can all agree that school is an important institution in our children's lives and even profoundly more effective when it's in person. So please, let's keep our schools open by continuing to mandate masks. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Annie Simpson.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Carrie Firestone, 36 Cambridge Crossing. I'm just here because I feel like it's the beginning of the school year, and we don't always get a chance to say the things we want to say to our staff and administrators because we get busy. But I've been around for a long time, and I've worked with lots of staff and administrators here. We've done projects together. We've worked on mundane things like schedules. We've actually had plenty of disagreements where we had really good, hearty conversations. And I would just like to say thank you because you have always, always remained professional. You've been thoughtful. You've struggled with really hard things, and you've always made what I think would end up being the right choice, or at least a choice I can live with because I've seen how hard you've worked to get to that point. And I know sometimes it feels like you're human, so you're going to feel like, you know, maybe nobody's on my side. But that is not the case. Lots of people are here to say, "We support you. We trust you." And now to the board, the same thing. You're elected people. You don't even get a paycheck. I know how hard you guys work. I know how exhausting this is. I know how emotionally draining this is. And yet, here you are, sitting here, listening to your constituents and your community share very difficult things. So as we go into the school year, I hope many of us who are sitting here remember to thank our staff, our teachers, our administrators, and maybe show up with cookies or something to show the gratitude because we really feel it. And it may not feel like that tonight, but it's there, and we are with you. And I don't know what decisions you're going to make on these things, but I trust you because I've seen how hard you work and how thoughtful you are with your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moy.
This is from Daniel Gottfried, Avon resident. He is white Friday for the Board of Ed. We are Avon residents with a rising creator and a rising minority. We, along with our minority, are vaccinated for COVID. And we certainly believe in the importance of vaccinations as well as the mysterious... mysterious health effects of COVID. That said, we are trying to urge Avon School District to reject any mask mandate for this school and leave this decision to parents. We are sharing hello with a recent Wall Street Journal editor written by the head of Pediatric Infectiousity and TOS, who is also on the FDA advisory group that clears for COVID vaccines, and a Johns Hopkins Medical School professor. They summed it up quite well, basically. Kids have very low risk from COVID and considerable risk and harm from being masks all day, including physical, mental, and social health. At the same time, every adult has had antiloxin and get themselves vaccinated. Forced masks, school sacrifices, the well-being and development of our kids in order to protect adults who are not willing to protect themselves by getting a vaccine. The school system should exist for the well-being and development of our kids. Full stop. As such, the only conclusion is to leave this multifaceted decision to the expression of the parents. Thank you for your consideration. Dan Michelle Gottfried.
Thank you. Next.
Bogan Opreka, 39, Stevens Street. I'm not sure if this is going to be well organized, try to get my thoughts together, but this is a matter that is deeply important to me. I think I'll start with some facts. So teachers and the staff who work in our schools are a cornerstone of our community. I think we all agree on that. I'm urging the board and the administration to protect and defend the fundamental human rights of our teachers. Recently, the governor, our governor, put out a directive mandating that our teachers be injected. I don't want to hear about the test-out option because two hours away, we have a city who just announced that they will not allow a test-out option for their teachers. They have a choice. Either get injection or lose their ability to earn a living, feed their family, and shelter their children. I'll try to follow the logic of the governor's decision-making process. On March 19th, the governor announced that capacity limits will be eliminated at restaurants, retail establishments, libraries, museums. On March 19th, there were 1,207 new cases and 10 deaths. So he reduced the restrictions then. On August 22nd, I tried to find a date close to when he implemented these new mandates. There were zero cases. So then, this is when he decided to implement what I think is the most intrusive, most draconian measure. A measure that's a direct attack on the human rights of our teachers. The right to make medical decisions, the right to own their own body with a threat of losing their livelihood. All this for no logical reason. I know we've heard people talk about the injections having some efficacy. Sadly, we all know these are more facts, that vaccinated transmit COVID, vaccinated get sick, and vaccinated have passed away with COVID. We've seen countries where their rates of vaccinations are extremely high. Israel, Gibraltar are two examples where cases and hospitalizations are rising. So I don't see the logic, but I do see the danger to basic human rights for our teachers. So I urge the board to really think about opportunities to protect those rights because I am concerned that the governor will keep pushing forward with this type of agenda. There's many who vilify those who made a choice to not get vaccinated. Those of us who got vaccinated, made a decision, weigh the pros and benefits. Those of us who didn't choose to get injected, I should be all that same right to make that decision for themselves. Those who vilify, those who chose not to get injected in the media, claim things like their, even politicians and others, claim that those who chose not to get vaccinated are a beetroot dish for infection and for disease. It's kind of akin to saying that another alarming trend we're facing in healthcare is antibiotic resistance. It's as if we're blaming antibiotic resistance on those who don't use antibiotics. Again, there's no logic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Opreka, and thank you for your service. Ms. Moy?
Next email is from Carol Shabinsky, Avon resident and Avon parent. Took order then, asking today if you can pick up and save at school. As a parent, it has always been one of the worries as we put our kids on the bus or drop them off. Will they be safe at school today? Safe from gun violence, safe from fire, safe from bullying? And now safe from COVID? Many of the safety drills at schools are required to run each year for fires and shootings are designed to keep kids safe. The many recent school building changes like locked entry lobbies and security changes are designed to keep kids safe. The vaccination requirements for entering school are designed to keep kids safe from common illnesses. Now, with cases of COVID cases and a more precarious strain of COVID, Avon schools seem to follow the guidance from the local and state departments of health and keep our kids safe at school by requiring everyone in the building to wear masks. I was hopeful in June with lower case rates of vaccinations that vaccinated students and staff could be maskless, but the recent trends have shown that everyone should be masked inside the buildings to keep all kids safe. Although some may suggest that COVID is not a big deal for younger kids, the fact is that no one can predict who may die from COVID and who may not even know they have it. None of the 11 and under are eligible for the vaccines yet. Many of these students live in households where siblings or parents or guardians may be vulnerable to that disease. I'm sure every student would be happy to wear a mask to protect their families at home and their teachers' families at home. Wearing masks at school will not only keep kids safe, but will keep the families and communities safe. Moreover, since the guidance on quarantining has changed, masks will better enable the schools to keep kids learning in person. I'm sure we all agree that students learn best when they can be in person as much as possible. No one wants our kids to face multiple weeks of online learning due to quarantine if we can minimize the risk by mask-wearing. Wearing masks and distancing will help keep our kids safe and our schools open. Thank you, Carol Shabinsky.
Thank you, Shirley. That completes the 15-minute section. How many people were there that had raised their hands before? We have one more. Perhaps we have, you come forward, and is the board comfortable with that? And then we'll move on through the, thank you very much. Okay, so please come forward for your three minutes.
Megan Belvow, 64 Daventry Hill Road. Good evening. I'm here tonight to express my great concerns about masking our children in school. I am part of a growing movement with over 215 members in my Unmask Our Kids Avon group to share the truth about the dangers of forced masking of our children. It doesn't take a medical degree to understand that if our kids can sit with their friends at a table in a crowded restaurant, then they can sit unmasked at their desks. 36 states do not have statewide mask mandates. And Connecticut and Rhode Island are the only New England states with such mandates. And now eight states have banned mask mandates for children. Why are they banning masks if they are truly so benign as some in this community believe? Wouldn't it be nice if there was a study conducted over the course of this pandemic which looked at the side effects of masking our children? Well, good news. A study was conducted in Germany with parents reporting on over 25,000 children who were masked over the school year during COVID. The results are concerning. 68% of the parents reported side effects in their children from masking. These include irritability, headache, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, impaired learning, drowsiness, shortness of breath, nausea, skin and other infections, rapid heart rate, and more. All of these side effects happened in children who have an almost zero chance of dying from COVID. The common flu is a greater risk for our children than COVID, and we never masked up for the flu. Death by suicide is much higher in this age group than COVID deaths. This CDC chart right here. This CDC chart ranks the causes of death in children. And COVID is very low on that list. You can see, age 5 to 14, COVID's down here. Suicide, much, much higher, way up here. So considering that anxiety is a known side effect of mask-wearing, maybe we should consider that mandatory masking could be one of the reasons why our town needed to host a special seminar to address the growing anxiety in our children. Why don't we push for unmasking our children as a first step in reducing...
It's very clear by now, the amount of time, energy, and what I'll call bandwidth we spend as Central Office and also the building administrators working through the various pieces of information that come to us from the state of Connecticut, from the Department of Public Health, from the local health department. Those are all of the things that we now just have to do, and they take a tremendous amount of time. But in addition to that, we're still looking to move the district forward and make progress toward our strategic plan, and also to do what I would call the more mundane things that we do during any summer to get ready. We're especially proud of how much we've accomplished this summer. I'm going to turn to my team here who helped put this together for tonight and save you from having to listen to me do the entire thing, and just speak through. We're not going to read everything to you, but we just want to add some context around the highlights of the work that we have accomplished in pushing us forward toward our strategic goals and also opening up for school next year. And so I'll pause there and say, Dr. Nestle Rusak, as you heard, is our Assistant Superintendent and manages and oversees the Teaching and Learning Office. I would ask you, Donna, if you would speak to the first piece related to students and staff, and then technology.
Sure. So we've had a very busy but very exciting and fulfilling summer. We started the summer by creating and launching what we called our Summer Skills and Fun website. There was a lot of concern that, you know, students may have lost a little bit academically. So for incoming kindergarten students and our rising students in grades one through seven, we did a website that was intended to help maintain and strengthen their academic skills. So it was really focused on literacy, math, social studies, and STEM. And then we included some enrichment boards on the website also. This was the first summer that we ran a summer program for our K-8 students. So 159 students who were receiving Tier Two or Tier Three intervention were invited to attend, and 37 of those students were invited to attend for both reading and math. Those are the two areas we focused on this summer. So we had 115 students that participated. We had 10 teachers or interventionists that staffed the program. So the program was held remotely four days a week for the month of July, and it was a combination of synchronous and asynchronous work. So the students met twice a week for 30 minutes with their teacher and then completed assignments on the other days. The software that we used was also available for the students to continue using through August with their families. So we also kind of gave them some enrichment to keep it going if they chose to. For our high school students, we did a summer credit recovery program. We had 50 students who attended classes during the school year, either in person or remotely, and received one or more Fs. Those were the students that we invited to participate so they could recover some credits. Fifty students were enrolled in a total of 94 courses that needed to be made up, and as of this morning, 21 students have participated and 31 courses have been completed with students earning credit recovery. Needless to say, as we get closer to the school year, we have many students that are still in the process and feeling a little bit more of a sense of urgency of completing the courses. So, you know, we're anticipating those numbers going up. That program was staffed four days a week for the month of July by two teachers. We had a humanities teacher and a STEM teacher. Students could participate remotely or in person. Every day, we had an average of one to three students that came here because they felt the library was a good place, or in a couple cases, their parent felt the library was a good place for them to focus and get their work done. The courses were specifically designed based on what each student needed in edgenuity, and what our teachers did was they provided that support. They monitored their work completion. They were in constant contact with parents and students regarding progress, lack of progress, participation, lack of participation. And I really need to commend the two individuals because why they were contracted to work from eight to 12, they pretty much worked all day long and into the evenings in terms of reaching out to students and families. So we were very, very thankful to them for that support that they did and going above and beyond. Obviously, the summer program was only for the month of July, but students were able to continue to work independently to complete their course or courses. We ran our extended school year program, which is for our special ed students. That was held in person this year at Roaring Brook for the month of July. We had 85 students attend and 55 staff members working with our students. We continued curriculum work and unit development, especially focused on K-12 for Reading and Writing Workshop, which, as you know, we recently adopted. And we were very fortunate to have the opportunity for our new curriculum specialists to come in and do some of that work with us so that they'll be really in a good place as they start the school year. We also provided access to a two-day professional development in the administration of the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment. So we had our K-6 reading consultants, curriculum specialists, and the Director of Curriculum, who are going to be supporting this transition from the Benchmark Assessments to the, from the Developmental Reading Assessment, get further trained so that we can do that trainer of trainer models, and they will train and support our teachers through that. We also, which we haven't had in the past, but this was a request of the buildings, was to create pacing guides for English Language Arts, Math, and Science. We did that, and they parallel the assessment calendar, and we've gotten some very positive feedback on that. So we drafted those out, worked with building administrators, and those will roll out to the teachers probably this Thursday or next Monday. So we're very excited to have that in place. We also came up with common expectations. People said it would be helpful to know what are those common expectations for Reading and Writing Workshop implementation for the next school year and also for the foundational skills and assessments. So we have those common expectations that we will be sharing again with our staff within the next few days. Data teams, we are going to be kind of revamping those. We spent last year with our assistant principals revamping all of the forums. We took them out for test drive, got faculty feedback. So those were all finalized this summer and are ready to roll for pre-K-12. We keep trying to improve in how we leverage our systems, especially Power School, which is our student management system. So we are moving all of our student assistant team forums there so more people have access to it, and the information will be readily available. In the fall, we're going to be bringing back our Unified Sports Program back into district, and the preparations were finalized for that. So we're excited to have that back in district. Our new staff orientation began last Thursday in a downpour. We had Henri on Monday and no orientation, but we are still swimming our way through it and moving things all over the place. So the first day, we had about 55 certified and non-certified staff. And what we did is we looked at the district mission beliefs and the blueprint, gave them an overview of the district's systems and structures. They got their new technology. We did an activity with them. They created bumper stickers from our mission statements and came up with some very cool things. I can share those with you later if you're interested. And then the certified staff had four more, and now it's three more, days where they do a lot of work on the curriculum, the assessments, our data collection. They set up their websites. We train them on all our software because we really want them to be in a very good, comfortable place when they start having everything in place. And then finally, we've welcomed 373 new students to the district. We've registered, completely registered that number, and we have quite a few that still owe us paperwork, so we can get them through. So excited about the numbers of folks that are joining us. In terms of technology, of course, I just touched the PowerPoint. You can't see it. Because of your gracious vote on the Chromebooks, we did receive our 1,500 Chromebooks. They have all been inventoried and prepped, and they are ready to go out to our students. And we have created that plan of how we're going to roll out the new ones, collect the old ones, and then replace Chromebooks for the students that aren't getting new ones this year, but they will get the newest models that we have available to them. We've started removing some smartboards and replacing them with the BenQ interactive flat panels. To date, we've only received a few of them, so we have put some in the high school here, and the bulk are going into Pine Grove because they're quite large, and storage is a problem at Pine Grove when the students come back, and we have so many there. So that's our priority school right now. We have a number of software programs. We have a ClassLink, which is a rostering software, and it will be a single sign-on, so our students will be able to get to any of our platforms with one single sign-on, which will make life much easier for all involved. We have implemented a Chromebook management system, and we're working on getting our world language moved from two labs to a virtual environment, so building those servers. A couple more things. We created and deployed a new technology asset management system so that we can manage all of the equipment that we have and keep track of it in a better or more efficient way is probably a better term. And a new work order system was developed this summer, and what the team did was they took the frequently asked ticket questions, like, here are my problems, and wrote a frequently asked question so that people can click on it and see, oh, if I do this, it will take care of this problem. So while we'll still give them any support they need, it may speed things up. We deployed eight new UPS units or battery backups. Ours weren't as long-lasting as we hoped, so not that we ever had a problem, but we didn't want one, so we have updated those. We've identified a new website. Final Site goes down in January, so we'll be moving to Intro to replace Final Site. And then finally, we rolled out the new Technology Device Protection Plan. We've had 858 students opt in, 266 have opted out, and we've got 23 that have asked for hardship assistance. So those are a few things we've been working on this summer.
Let me just pause there a second. Any questions about any of that? I know that's a lot. You have it in front of you, but it really is just a portion of what we've done in June, July, and part of August. You can see, Shirley, if you could put up the next, just so people can see, and the board knows. In the area of systems and communications, and to be clear, we tried to match this up with our strategic plan. You may recognize the language. We have four areas that we're focused on in our strategic planning, teaching and learning, of course, personal growth and relationships, systems, and community partnerships and communication. So we, a lot of these overlap, but we did the best we could to kind of quantify them without bringing out the gigantic plan and spending the time going through that tonight. Certainly, there'll be another time for that. You can see, we did quite a number of capital projects. Our stage floor at AMS, the gym floor at the high school, the gym floor at TBS, and we finally got that skylight replacement in the PGS Media Center. That was a long time coming. And of course, did some carpet replacement and so on. Mr. Medic, I should allow you to speak to the remaining parts on the hiring and a lot of the COVID protocols that certainly worked closely with me and us to finish.
As you can see from the board packet, the hiring report is pretty lengthy. We've onboarded 54 employees since April, 27 certified, 27 non-certified, and still counting. We do have a few more vacant positions that we are looking to finalize hires for in the next day so that we're ready to go for Thursday and obviously for Monday. The group of educators that we brought on, both certified and non-certified, are truly talented individuals, and we had the opportunity to welcome them to our school community this week through orientation. At the same time, we did update our COVID-19 procedures based on the information, guidance, and directives that we received from the state of Connecticut and Department of Public Health. We have continued to update policies and make the necessary revisions to school handbooks in accordance with them for the upcoming school year. Our security plans at all the schools have been reviewed and updated. In addition to some of the capital improvement items, we also have some security enhancement items that we've put into our buildings and have tested the operational impact of them, and they are ready to go. So thank you to our staff. And one of the biggest things, many people probably saw the foyer walking into the high school today. Our buildings were prepared, clean, and ready for the start of the school year two weeks earlier than normal, and we are very much appreciative of our custodians and maintenance staff effort. We're currently on punch list items in all of the buildings. We're excited for the care that they've taken to prepare them this week. They do look gorgeous, and we're excited to have our staff see them on Thursday in full.
Thank you. And then just quickly, Ms. Rousseau and I wanted to ensure that we gave you just a quick update on where we are in terms of the American Rescue Plan, the ESER funds, the grant funding. That is yet another thing that we've had to do over the summer to apply for. It's an arduous process. We have talked about everything here before, but I just wanted to take a moment and quickly allow Susan to be clear about what the dollar amount of the money is, what we are spending it on. You've heard a number of things that will connect to grant funding.
Thank you. So our allocation from the state from our June meeting changed slightly. Our final allocation was $748,132. Of that, a mandatory minimum of 20% had to be set aside to address learning loss, and that equated to $149,626. Reminder, the ARP-ESER or American Rescue Plan was, the purpose of that grant from the federal government was to transform the district, to take this opportunity with these funds to address the learning loss, but also to move everything in our blueprint forward, take the next steps in our evolution. Currently, the status of the grant is approved. So we've submitted our plan. We've got it approved. We've got a feedback from the state, make tweets as necessary, and we're all set to go. Some of the things we're using that for is to address the needs that Dr. Rusak talked about in teaching and learning. We've hired an English Language Learner teacher and tutor, and we have that position for two years, funded through the grant, as well as teaching assistants in our buildings, grades K through four. An interventionist, an additional one at our high school for two years as well. Our social and emotional learning supports, we've added a counselor to the high school in the second year of that. If you remember, in our ESER II grant that we spoke about earlier in the year, we funded the first year of that position. This gives us an additional year for that position. In our curriculum supports and resources, we've contracted with a reading workshop consultant to move forward that work that we've started this last year. We did some more work with Fuentes and Pennell in the benchmark training, some foundations word study, intervention materials to support all these efforts were purchased, as well as contracting with Kelly Services to provide building substitutes to keep things static in our buildings when our teachers do have to be out. We have a full-time person in place that'll be a substitute for each building, who knows the teachers, knows the staff, knows the students. Environmental health and safety upgrades, we are contracting with Lunch Monitor at Avon Middle School to support the new schedule changes there, to have additional supports. We did air quality testing in our buildings to ensure that we have that proper ventilation airflow. We did some upgrades to the Thompson Brook HVAC system to ensure it was working appropriately. We have some additional money set aside for more repairs that may come up as we use these systems to meet the CDC standards. Also, we purchased air filtration units to be used specifically in our nurses in our quarantine rooms so that we have additional protections within those spaces.
Thank you. Any questions about any of that before I just move on, wrap up?
I'd just like to acknowledge how impressive all of that is to have been done in a shorter period of time. Thank you for all of your efforts to do that. Shows what we want to provide for our students here. Did anyone else have any questions or comments?
So that's the big picture on where we are in terms of strategic goals as we move forward into the school year. We are happy to be moving those things forward. It would be remiss if I didn't say that we are ready otherwise for the students to start too. The bus routes are completed. They've, we've worked with the bus company to look at those again. We are working at, looking at what's on the website and making those updates, finishing up scheduling. Those are being sent out. As you know, they were held back as we processed registrations and also awaited to see what we would be able to do in terms of spacing and class sizes. So that's been a lot of work. And again, I'll thank the administrators and the clerical staff and our counselors for their help in that. We are excited and ready to go when the students return and when the rest of our staff comes in. It's new student, excuse me, new staff orientation right now, as you know, Thursday. The rest of our faculty and staff, everyone that works in the district, will return. We are doing convocation. We are doing a modified version of that this year, building by building. We've got a bigger and better version of that this year. We're excited to be able to go back to some of the way that we've done it in the past, and I'll leave it there because I don't want to spoil particularly one of our surprises. I'll just, I'll have to thank that person at the next meeting. And that's it. We are ready to, believe it or not, we are ready to see summer come to a close. It's been, it's been very busy, and it might actually be a little bit of a rest for some of us when the students actually come back and we can see the fruits of those labors. So thank you for all of your support and to everyone who worked with us over the summer.
Thank you very much. Our next piece is consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve? All right, Jason, do I have a second? Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And next is old business, discussion of the reopening plan. I guess this is an opportunity for us as board members just to get clarity or to ask questions that we think might be helpful, not only for ourselves but for those in attendance and those who might watch Nutmeg on Saturday, to talk with Dr. Colonel and our attorney about some of the pieces. I was hoping that Ms. Alfonso, if you could possibly speak to the role of a Board of Ed member in decision-making on these kinds of requirements for mandates, the position that we're in, is it really optional or is it expected that we would follow the law?
Did I do that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. I think that, I believe that information about this has, legal opinion about this has probably been shared with the board members so far. So I'm really reiterating what I believe all of you have already read in writing, which is a recent opinion, which we had actually, our law firm, had provided to CAPS to be, to be shared with superintendents all over. This isn't specific to Avon. And the underlying issue is, and we've heard a lot of really heartfelt, important comments here tonight, the problem is that right now, from a legal perspective, regardless of your personal opinions about whether or not masks should be required legally in schools for all children and all people who enter the school building, like all of us, they are. They are legally required currently by the governor. It's an executive order. There's discussion about also, it's an executive order. It's also the Department of Public Health. It's also from the Department of Education. And I think all of the speakers here have acknowledged that that is, whether people agree with it or not, that that is the current state of the law. And the most important thing, and I know you all got this from the memorandum, so I don't want to, you know, overstate because you're all capable of reading it and digesting it, is that it is absolutely the legally necessary thing for you to do, for you to follow the law. As Board of Education members, you're obligated to do that. And if you fail to do that, not only could you potentially experience personal liability because you're going beyond the protections that you're extended by being a Board of Education member, but it could also potentially damage the school district's receipt of funds and could cause liability for the district as a whole. So while this remains an executive order, this particular piece that we are talking about right now, which I think is what you're asking me about, which is the mask mandate, unfortunately, the Board of Education members can of course have personal opinions, but you can't act counter to the law without bringing serious liability to yourself and to the school district. And that's not, you know, it's your duty to not do that as Board of Education members. So that's the important piece. The other thing I'll just, I'll just add on kind of gratuitously right now because I can kind of anticipate a follow-up question is that you don't know yet what decisions you may have the opportunity to make as Board of Education members. As we sit here on August 24th, you don't know yet whether or not that mandate is going to remain in place. You don't know yet whether it's going to be potentially, potentially lifted early. You don't know yet whether or not it's going to look differently in terms of Governor Lamont deciding that it's not going to be a statewide mandate, but that there are going to be other metrics. We heard some questions tonight about metrics, which makes a lot of sense. Is it not going to be a mandate? Is it going to be handled some other way? But it, so you, you can't yet, you can consider all of these factors and, and your own personal, you know, what you might think about them, but you can't yet make a decision because there are too many moving pieces for you to know what, what your legal obligations are going to yet be. Nobody knows yet. Everybody, that's, that's kind of been the, the problem for school boards and administrations throughout this entire time period, right? Is that we're always, there's new guidance out, and for us, attorneys as well, as a matter of fact. I mean, there's new guidance out constantly that you're supposed to, it's thrown at you. It always comes a little late. You're trying to digest it. You're trying to understand it. For the next five weeks, you, you really can't, without breaking the law and bringing liability to yourselves and one another in your school community, do anything but follow the mandate. And it really depends what happens to the mandate. I would imagine that prior to, and this is just my opining, right? I would imagine that prior to the drop-dead date on this mandate, that you're going to hear a lot about it from, you know, from the legislature, from the governor's office, from other constituencies, and then you'll see where you are. And you may have to have other meetings and other conversations. I'm assuming that you will. But right now, you don't know the answer to what your Department of Public Health, your executive order, your Department of Education, and what all those factors will be. And there will be a lot of decisions to be made, but you're just not there yet. I hope that answered your question.
That is very helpful. Thank you very much. Did anyone else have questions? Jackie, just turn on your mic.
Thank you for that. That's helpful information. I guess the question I have is, going forward, if the executive order is terminated or ends, how, how does a board relate to the, their local Department of Health or their state Department of Health? They're not really require, suggestions or highly, highly suggest. Are we held by the same standard to support what our local and state health department are suggesting even after the mandate?
Yes, unless they are just suggestions. So it depends like on, on the terminology and what, what the state is at that point, right? Like right now, the departments of public health around the state have, are the ones who are supposed to be regulating what you're doing here in school, right? It's an executive order now that we would all listen to this Department of Public Health. They're all intertwined. So if that was relaxed somehow, and it was suggestions, recommendations, but right now, it's mandated guidelines and, you know, just like we wouldn't want the Department of Public Health, you wouldn't, as board members, telling you what to do for curriculum in your classrooms and all of that, because they're not experts on that. Similarly, you could easily be liable, held liable for taking over public health decisions when there are firm guiding slash mandates, and it depends what form those are put out there. But the bottom line answer is yes. As, as Boards of Education, I don't think that it would be prudent for you to ignore what your health district is telling you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if it's a question for you or for the superintendent, but the superintendent has always, I'll, I'll use the word scold us when it comes to policy. We vote on policy. She's responsible for implementation and enforcement. And so I understand with the executive order, our policy is that everyone who enters the building must be masked. That's the extent of our authority. So my question is, what is mandated and required in terms of the enforcement on the staff, the superintendent? What does that look like? Do we have to suspend students who do not wear a mask? Is it a detention? What does that look like? Because I think that may be a question. I need an understanding so I can understand what the policy is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Bridget, if you want to speak to that, if you want me to speak to it first and. Okay. So, yeah, I might too. So that's a really good question. The law as it stands now, the mandate, does not dictate the consequences for lack of following the mandate, right? So could, can the police in a forum like this enforce the law? Yes. I think your question is, what do you do within the school building if a student does not wear a mask? I do not think that you would call the police. I don't think that that would be a normal, you know, I think that you would handle it. I think that there is not a legal dictate about how that would be handled, is my answer. And so that would more be, there is discretion there about the implementation of that within the school building.
But that's beyond the realm of this board, right? If I understand, because that's the policy and then it falls to the superintendent and her staff in terms of the implementation.
That would be my understanding too, is that the board is not going to set up how the policy is enforced within the school building. That is correct.
I can ask one additional question too, and I, I know some of it's here. If an individual... If an individual has a medical notice regarding an exemption.
Are you talking about an adult or a child?
Child.
Okay.
Because staff would be someone different, right? In my mind, how we would handle that.
They are different.
In terms of a child.
Yeah. A student within the school building.
A student in the district who has a medical notification. Is it my understanding that it would be submitted and have to be treated through the 504 process? Is it a superintendent's discretion? I think originally, we were told it was superintendent's discretion, and the state has made, maybe I misunderstood.
No. It's, the process would be, and I've been working with many districts on this exact thing, as the school year starts again, and a number of parents, you know, have submitted or have requested mask exemptions, and in directing them what the district needs back in order to make that decision, what the district needs back, because it's a medical exemption, or related to disability. So there are two different prongs there, okay? If it's medically related, not due to a developmental disability or that type of thing, then it would be getting the medical from a physician, similar to what, there's a process that we use within schools for homebound instruction. It's like medical discussion between the district's medical personnel and the physician or healthcare provider about discussing why the child can't wear a mask, is there any way that we can teach the child how to wear a mask? Is there any way that we could accommodate the child not wearing a mask, that type of thing? But it would be analyzed, and then if the physician signed off that the student needed a mask exemption, the student would have a mask exemption. And that would be, you know, the, if it, if it was medically, you know. And, and for disabilities, it's a little bit of a different analysis that really would be done through a PPT process, a planning placement team process, or a section 504 process, looking at, and it really wouldn't be a 504 usually, because if it was, to the extent of developmental disabilities, that really would fall under a planning and placement team kind of analysis about, you know, is there any way that we can get this student to wear the mask? Can we work, let's work on a plan through the IEP about how the student can learn to wear a mask, and in the meantime, how are we going to deal with it, and, and what are the ways around it? And so that is an individualized process, depending upon whether it's related to a student's disability or related to a, a medical exemption.
Great.
And, you know, we really haven't, I, I think there are a lot of kind of things thrown out there about, oh, everybody's, who doesn't believe in, in, you know, wanting their child to wear a mask is going to get their physician to write a letter and ask for a medical exemption. Really haven't found that to be the case. You know, the, the, really found it to be that if there's a medical reason and a physician writes a letter, then the school district works with that family and, and works around it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I just needed a clarification. I, I don't know if I understood you correctly. So if a parent submits a medical exemption written from a physician, the physician now has to negotiate with the, with the staff or the administration?
It may not be a negotiation, if that's how I made it sound, it was not. There usually, a lot of times, there would be a conversation between the person who was reading the mask exemption and, and a clarification of if there's any way to work with the child, is there any way that the student can be encouraged to wear a mask, what is the medical condition, that kind of thing. It's not a negotiation. The district's goal, in, in my experience at least, and I'm, I'm not speaking specific to Avon, I'm speaking kind of generically, would not be to not respect or to override the physician, but really to understand, because the, the kind of medical exemptions that are kind of listed in general, in a lot of the stuff that we've read for adults are, are really extreme kinds of situations, right? Where somebody has emphysema and truly, you know, or, I'm going to say it wrong, a CPOD or, you know, some, a really significant breathing issue. And so I think that, that that's kind of the mindset of, oh, those are the people that need mask exemptions. Obviously, it might go a lot further with a child, there might be a lot more reasons why a child medically might need a mask exemption. So I'm not suggesting it would necessarily be a negotiation, but typically, I think there would be a, a conversation about it, between the medical provider and the school.
And?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I just want to be clear. I, you know, I do a lot of special education, that kind of thing. I'm not suggesting that the law says that if you submit a medical mask exemption, then there has to be X, Y, Z process. I'm more talking about in the day-to-day, that's what I'm seeing districts do, is have these conversations, so they can understand.
Yeah. And I guess my question is, who in a day-to-day is, is the administrator, or who is the person having these discussions? With the medical professionals?
It would typically be either the medical advisor for the school district, or potentially the school nurse.
Okay.
I, in my, yeah, in my experience, it hasn't, it wouldn't be somebody at the administrative level, kind of just calling up the doctor.
Okay. I, I just curious.
Just curious, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone with other questions? Jeff?
Because I always have multiple questions. So one of the things that has bothered me in terms of the mandate is not so much the mask issue, but the restriction of things that we've done in the past. For example, the remote learning. Right? The governor said point-blank, there will be no remote learning during this academic year. If we chose to offer remote learning, we would be in the same type of violation as we said no masks. Correct?
That is a much more finessed and very complicated answer, is the best, that's an honest, because it's something that, that districts are talking about every day. Districts are talking about it based upon, some districts that I work with have very large populations of parents who don't want to send their kids back to school for whatever reasons. And so districts are, or some superintendents and administrations are talking about, what can we offer? What should we offer? Are we supposed to be offering everything? And frankly, the State Department of Education, which is the one that's putting, so that's not coming from, you know, everybody, the governor's administration and the Department of Education want children in school, right? That's a kind of general proposition. The, "We're not doing remote learning this year" really stemmed from districts wanting to know, do we have to offer a remote learning program this year? We need to know. It stressed our staffs out very much last year to be doing both things. Do we have to offer both? And the State Department of Education came down and said, no, we're not doing remote learning this year, you don't have to offer remote learning this year. So if you're asking, are you?
Could we?
Are you breaking the law by offering some not-in-school educational supports? I don't think that that's a fair analogy to the executive order about a mask.
Well, so because one of our mitigation strategies we implemented last year was the remote instruction. And we have heard from individuals who are very concerned about sending their students to schools for various reasons, masks, no masks, that's the common thread I hear on both sides of the argument. We have spent so much time and resources preparing and setting up a remote option for students in order for parent comfort and student safety, and now I feel, if my understanding is, we can't offer it. Is it not that the case? Can we, as a board, tell the superintendent, we would like to provide the opportunity for our students to remote into class?
Not at this juncture. It's not being supported by the state at this juncture. All I would say is, that could change based upon, we hope it doesn't, I hope it, so solely, that's, I'm just giving.
Based, based on the information right now?
Right. No, we're not offering remote instruction at this point. And that, it is not supported at this point. You are not offering remote instruction at this point. The reason I was saying it might, it could change is because the health metrics could change that, right? They're kind of saying, don't offer remote instruction right now, but be ready, just in case things get really bad again and we change our tune again. Right now, you are not offering remote instruction. That is correct.
But the health metrics is what I've been complaining about for the last year, and that the, the inconsistency, that they, the governor's chosen, the state has chosen to use the county numbers and not the local Farmington Valley Health District.
Well, I'm not, I'm not defending.
And, and, no, no, I just, and, and I'm trying to understand, are we held to the mercy of the state on which metrics we use? Or do we, as a board, have any latitude? Let's say the governor allows the executive order to exp, I, I know we're probably in fantasy land here, but is there any way we can talk about any other metrics besides what the state is feeding us?
Currently, the way the law is regarding the mask mandate, that's executive order, as I said, you can't readdress that yet. And that could change a lot in the next five weeks, right? Because that's about how long we have until this runs out, unless you hear something sooner, which could very well happen. In terms of your question about remote learning, that too could change. Right now, the state is saying, we're not doing remote learning this year, you're doing in-person learning. So can you, can, Bridget, if you want to speak to this, you can. Can, can you, as a board, do something different?
Well, we obviously can't, right? That would be the violation of the executive order. So I get that. I, I just. That's my frustration. And so I, I guess my next question may be directed to the superintendent in terms of, now I'm blanking. Oh, I know there's been some changes to the mitigation strategies we implemented last year, for various reasons and, and so forth. Is that based upon the guidance from the state, or is that has been based upon your administrative decision?
Okay. Let me go back to the remote, because I think you're also, you might also be asking something else, and even if you're not, I just want to make sure that we're clear.
Okay.
So Alice is answering your question, can we offer remote full-time as an option? And the answer is no.
Okay, yep.
It would not count toward the mandatory school days that students have.
Toward meeting your educational.
That, that was my question.
Right. So that said though, there could be times where we would have to, so let's use an example, if students had to be quarantined again, we're going to have to figure out what to do with them, obviously. The state didn't say that we had to offer them remote learning. It said we had to make a plan for them. So that, in the state's eyes, could have been, you know, as simple as just some homebound tutoring, which is a, a smaller version of what we would like to offer as a district. So we have a, a plan to be able to provide a combination of, of services for students if they have to be quarantined, and some of that would be remote. So that's when we can use it. Likewise, back to the idea of if a student had a 504, you know, plan for, or an IEP for disability, and was unable to be present in school for those reasons, like we've always had happen, COVID or not, we could utilize remote instruction in those cases if it were a part of the student's plan, for portions of it. That is allowable.
Right. I, I just want to clarify one point with what Bridget said. I was dealing with the district on this exact thing today about for an identified special education student, and if there is going to be a portion of the instruction for that student that is going to be what last year we were calling remote instruction. We're, we're calling it something different this year because, in fact, we're not supposed to be doing remote instruction right now. So as the primary learning field, so we're still talking about, we're not in the same physical place, but we're not, at this juncture, calling it remote instruction.
Thanks for letting me know.
Yeah.
They hadn't, they hadn't sent that one yet.
So it's, you know, that's a term, and again, it, it's very, districts are really torn right now about what they are allowed to offer, but the, the bottom line of what Bridget said is exactly accurate, that right now, you as the Avon Board of Education can't decide, we're going to offer a fully robust, remote option as we did last year, and that will count as if we're fully educating you. Can't do that right now.
Even to the extent that we're not allowed to use it in the coming year for weather days. Which.
So now there's this, you know, now the State Department of Education is setting up another committee, and there's going to be discussion about what that will look like in the future. But right now, as we sit here today, that is not a current option for you as, as a way in which to deliver education. And I, you know, yes, some people are frustrated about it, some people are happy about it, but that's kind of the current state of the union.
And in terms of the changes in our mitigation strategies?
Your second question was related to the, the mitigation strategies that we have to employ. First of all, I, I guess I would say that in, in many ways, the strategies aren't really much different than they, than they were in the previous year. And I think that it's a misnomer perhaps, because one thing that, you know, I hear a lot from folks is, well, you know, six feet versus three feet. Last year, when the state released its, and remember, there were requirements, and then there was guidance. So again, back to Alice's point, there's a difference in the language, what do we absolutely have to do, and what's recommended that we do if it's feasible. And you remember that the requirement last year was at least three feet between students. The recommendation was six feet where possible. And so what we did as a school district in our reopening plan last year was plan for the minimum of three feet. And remember, we went out building to building, there were measurements of desks, we had, I mean, we had to go to those lengths to be able to ensure both you as a board and the community, and also turn our plan into the state, that we were actually able to fully reopen. And we had always at least three feet, and in some cases where there was enough space, we had six feet. It's the same as it is this year. The difference, I think, in part is what we saw in other school districts where if you couldn't even maintain the three feet minimum, it was impossible for you to bring the students back into school. And that's why you saw districts stay hybrid the entire year, some even that were remote, based on the number of students that stayed home and so on. But here, that's really not a change for us. And I just want to, you know, point out again, because I know there are these concerns too, from, for some, implementing those strategies, we did not see one case of transmission within our schools that was documented at least. We, you know, we did what they asked us to do. I'm not, again, I'm not the public health expert, I'm not saying, I'm not claiming one way or the other how it is that that happened. What I'm saying to you is, as you know, our goal was to be able to be open for all students to be here. And for the majority of the year, we had the majority of our students here. I think that's another misconception regarding the numbers of students that we're in. At our worst, what I'll call our worst point, our lowest point of student attendance was the month of January, for students who had gone remote. And at that point, I believe we had 880 students that were fully remote in January. That was kind of a peak, after the holidays, when folks were worried, I think, about, you know, traveling and so on, and more and more people pulled their students out to stay home and waited it out to see, you know, what happened. Well, what happened was, we continued on, and we did, as you know, have to send out numerous notifications regarding positive cases, but we never had to send out any notification that someone traced their COVID case back to our school district. So as we went back through the year, and more and more students returned, by the time it was June, we had 550 students out, and that's of approximately 3,500 students. And it was throughout the entire district, as you know also. So one of the things, I, I bring that up, because I think it's important to speak to the fact that our plan last year was a plan for everybody to return. When we got together as an administrative team, and then as a reopening committee, and with you as a board, we said, we're going to do whatever it takes that the schools are fully open, and we're going to assume every student comes back to school. Because ideally, that's what we wanted to be able to have in. So our schools ran that way last year, whether or not the kids were here. So that part of the plan is no different for us. So part of the reason we're in this room tonight, obviously, it worked out with the size of the public that came to, to see the meeting or to participate. But the reality is, as you know, we're utilizing every possible space in this building, including where we normally meet, because that's part of the way we were able to meet the requirements and allow enough space and all of the other factors that we've been told to do. So that happened last year, that'll happen this year. Lunch looks very much the same. Some of the students, we have students eating in the cafeteria, we have students, you know, we, we've converted spaces and classrooms and in other areas of the building. Students were not wearing masks outside at recess last year, they're not wearing masks outside at recess this year. Some of the CIAC guidelines have changed a little bit, we're still working through those, and I'm going to speak to those tonight, because it's another example of something that just came recently. But generally speaking, I think the two main differences that you'll see are the following. One, that the desk shields were removed, and as you all know, that was, that started to dwindle as a possible recommendation. as a possible recommendation even toward the end of last school year, using the plastic barriers. And now, but at the time, as you know, we were told to not change anything. Even if the recommendations started to change, we were told to stay steady so that we weren't as school districts, I guess, the test cases for having a lot of individuals in one space and then worrying about spread. So, we held tight.
Can you just clarify, who said?
So, that's a recommendation from the CDC and the Department of Public Health.
Thank you.
To not rely on plastic barriers. We do still have them. We still have desk shields, you know, in storage, Lord knows, there were a number of them, and we put them away. If there are individual instances where they would need to be utilized again, then we would do that, just like there are individual cases where people need to wear a shield over a mask or need to wear a shield of a disability instead of a mask and so on. So, it's a possibility, but it's no longer a requirement. And the other thing I think you'll see that is different is another example that the requirement changed even over the course of, toward the end of last year. When we first were giving the information from CDC and the Department of Public Health, I think everyone knows this, we were continually told about, you know, surfaces and so on, continually sanitize the surfaces. They have later put out from the research that people aren't, they don't find that there's any or any substantial transmission from surfaces. So, we are not now wiping desks down continuously. Doesn't mean they're not getting clean, of course, they're getting clean, but not in the same manner that we had to do before. And the other piece of that that I think is actually more important is that we're able to bring back into the classrooms more of the materials that students used. So, you know, at the beginning of the school year last year, one of the recommendations and some pieces of the requirements were to, you know, quarantine materials. So, you know, if you Jeff and you Jason went outside and played basketball, when recess was over, that basketball had to go into, you know, quarantine and sit in a spot for 24 hours or something. And so, it made it incredibly difficult for us and for, you know, for our staff to continue to allow students to engage in, you know, some of the pieces of what I'd call normalcy. So, of course, we just bought more and more things so that we had enough to go around. But, another difference is something that if you have little children, you know more about, and our younger people, our younger, our staff that teaches our younger kids know, the centers, for example, in the lower grades, we had to take most of those out because, again, it, from, logistically, we couldn't, you picture a three or a four-year-old playing in a, playing house in a little kitchen that we have in pre-K, and they're both touching things. Last year, we were told that they couldn't do that without completely sanitizing it. That wasn't logistically possible for us to do, so all those things were, had to be removed. All those things are now back in the classroom. So, in terms of differences, Jeff, those are the main ones, that we're actually able to utilize the materials that our students and our teachers need to be in the classrooms, and that you won't see as a requirement, the plastic shields. Everything else that we did last year, for the most part, you're going to see that we're continuing to do, but they are the pieces, I would contend, are less restrictive.
Any changes to the quarantining practice?
So, the quarantining practices, as you know, remember, we don't determine those. We aren't, we as a school district aren't quarantining you. The Health Department, it's a Health Department order. So, there are some changes. I'm not going to go through every one of them now because everyone will, it's a decision tree, and it would take me about 25 minutes between probably Mr. Medick and I to explain how the decisions have to be made. It's online. But there have been some changes in the length of time, you know, the 10 days instead of 14 if you're considered a close contact, and also the, those that are vaccinated, obviously, we've all heard about that, I think, in the news, versus those that are not. If you are, say, a teacher that is fully vaccinated and you are determined to be a close contact of a student who is a positive COVID-19 case, you are not required to quarantine anymore as long as you're asymptomatic, for example. So, asymptomatic vaccinated individuals, the Health Department does not require quarantine. So, those are the main differences. And the, and the fact that you can now test out of the quarantine, which they were not allowing, they were allowing the general public to do, but they were not allowing school districts to do last year.
Lisa?
Is this the time to ask these questions about the, oh, I have like a list of questions about the opening, and I wasn't sure if this was the time, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, so the quarantine rules, are they different for the staff versus the students? Because that's, I saw that.
Yes.
Okay, so can you just explain the differences to the public?
So.
And me, for that matter?
Three, the CDC recommendation that went out to the Department of Public Health was to make an exception to the guidelines related to who is considered a close contact of a positive case and therefore needs to quarantine. They made an exception for students only, not adults, in classroom settings. So, this is one of the differences, back to the three and the six feet. If you are ma, if a student is masked and is three feet or more from another student who tests positive for COVID-19, they do not need to quarantine anymore, as long as they are, again, they're asymptomatic, that's a piece of it. Last year, it was six feet, as you know. So, we have a smaller range now, and I, and that's actually one of the things that I think that them taking the research and the statistics, the data from some of us as school districts in the United States that actually were open with students in, and back to what I said earlier about not reporting any secondary transmissions, because we had to report that if it happened to the state, and that was reported to the federal government. So, we were told that some of that data was utilized across the United States to make that exception. If you are an adult, though, the rule is still the six feet.
Okay. Do you want me to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Will we be requiring those who are exposed to get a test to come back to school? If they remain asymptomatic, are we requiring, well, I mean, if they are asymptomatic, so, a student is exposed, they're asymptomatic, are we requiring them to get a test at any point, three to five days after the exposure, whatever?
So, again, if they're, if they're not considered a close contact, so if they were, you know, further than three feet away and they had their masks on, endorse classroom study. They're not going to quarantine, they're not going to need to do anything unless they're symptomatic. If they're symptomatic, they are subject to the Public Health Order to quarantine, and they could produce a test after three to five days, I believe it is, right, Mr. Medick, to return back sooner than the 10 days.
Okay. Will we be doing any screening testing?
No.
You answered some of my questions, so, just a second. And then, in terms of athletics, are we requiring athletes to get a COVID shot?
No.
If not, what if any testing requirements, are there any testing requirements for our athletes?
There are no testing requirements for the athletes either. It's the same conditions as what is determined to be a close contact or not, and whether or not the Department of Public Health requires a quarantine.
Okay. And for spectators, if observing a sport outside, yet on school grounds, are we required to wear a mask? Are people required to wear a mask?
No. And we weren't at the end of last year either.
Okay. That wraps it up for me for questions.
Thank you.
Is that because it's outside and not?
It's because it's outside.
Thank you.
And again, that's the mandate, not the, it's not the policy.
Just one comment, it kind of ties into that last point. And to reiterate something I brought up, I don't know, January, February, but, you know, we're dealing with a lot of complicated issues and a lot of complicated mitigation strategies. And I really feel wholeheartedly that one of the things we need to focus on, and I don't need you to go through what we're doing, but we need to really focus on utilizing that outdoor space, especially when we go back to school and reopen in September. And we know masks are going to be in place until at least September 30th. Again, you took us through the different things we have been doing to get outdoors and get mask breaks and to be in the open air, but I just want to reiterate my feeling that to the extent we can really maximize that, especially when we get back to school, the weather is nice, people are trying to get back to a routine, I just, I feel strongly that's something we should really put some effort into. So, I remain of that opinion, just to, just to be clear.
Absolutely. If we could have logistically had this meeting outside and been able to report it, that would have been ideal, and we wouldn't all be sitting here with masks on. Thank you.
Other board members? So, Laura, okay.
Wasn't a question as much as just to say that the reopening plan reflects all the hard work that has gone into and the recommendations that have been made to us to allow our schools to remain open. And I want that to be reiterated and emphasized, that all these strategies that are put into place are there so that we can keep our students in school.
Okay, I just wanted to extend you the opportunity if there was something we didn't ask that you wanted to share with us. I think you're a pretty good question askers, so, not in particular. Thanks.
One thing that I think we should point out, though, and I just asked attorney, I'll finalize this tonight when she arrived, because I talked to her this morning, and I was wondering if anything happened between then and now, because that's how quickly things have been happening at some intervals. If there was any update on the, the issues of full school staff vaccinations, the requirement that the governor spoke about that, I think we've heard a little bit about tonight, and also more guidance related to the mask exemptions, because, and I, not that you did a good job already with that, I just wanted to relay that unfortunately, this is another example of where some of what is put out by one agency doesn't necessarily match up with another, and then we are left waiting for that to be rectified. That's where we are in the mask exemption piece, I know that, and I believe you said to me, we still don't have anything solidified there, but we also don't have very much information related to the mandate for public school employees to get vaccinations. Am I correct?
Well, the mask exemptions, I think you were talking about, in, the mask exemptions, no, I mean, there's a process in place, and families can ask for a medical mask exemption, and we'll go through the process, and, you know, when a physician signs off, I have not, I have not experienced a school district that received a medical mask exemption signed by a physician, and the school district said, yeah, no, we don't believe it. That, that, that's not happening. So, you submit medical mask exemption, there might be some discussion back and forth, but it's not like a, yeah, no, I don't, I don't think this doctor's right. That's not going on. But what Bridgette was talking about just now was, you know, Governor Lamont came out, and I think it was last week, the days are all blurring together, and, and there's a necessity that all school employees now get vaccinated. There was conflicting language in the executive order about whether or not in Connecticut, whether or not employees had the right to test out instead of, to test negative for COVID, instead of getting a vaccine, in lieu of getting a vaccine, because there was conflicting language and communication between the executive, the governor's office, and heads of the teachers' union, and a lot of back and forth. So, some caps, for example, you know, superintendent's organization and others are asking for clarification on the language in the executive order, because the governor's office has been talking about it both ways. Therefore, there, it is still confused whether or not school employees will in fact have the right to test rather than get vaccinated. And there is no, as we sit here right this second, there's no conclusion on that computer. I think some people think it's definitely one way, some people think it's definitely another, and we don't have an answer, because we've pointed out the conflicting language in the order. So, we're waiting for further clarification on that one.
So, our staff doesn't know whether or not they have to be vaccinated or not?
I don't know what your, how your staff is responding, I'm just sort of giving it stated, you know, like, we all heard that New York City, no, there's no test-out option, I don't know if it was city or state, there's no test-out option, you got to get vaccinated. Connecticut, we're still trying to find out what the bottom line is. That's all I know.
So, Bridgette, what does our staff know at this point?
What I have communicated is what I know, which is what they know, that we received the word from the governor that all school district staff would have to be vaccinated to continue working in schools, and that the first dose of the vaccination, if it was a two-dose vaccination, should be administered by September 27th, and that at this time, that was all that they had given us. They hadn't spoken about test-out options, to Alice's point, which is why I wanted to bring it up, or anything else, and certainly, that currently at least, leaves us in a place of not being able to practically or logistically work with that information. So, I've put it out so that they knew, the staff basically knew that I didn't have any other secret information, so to speak. What you saw on TV is what we have, and that's it for now.
To the best of your knowledge, what percentage of our staff is vaccinated, fully vaccinated? Sorry, Roberto.
No, that's okay. We haven't, we haven't recollected that again since they've come back.
We have not collected that information as of yet. Tomorrow morning, we'll be communicating with our staff about providing copies of their vaccination cards to various school medical folks in the buildings. We'll have a better handle on that in the next couple of days. We did have a very high number of staff get vaccinated in February and March, concrete number, I don't, it wouldn't be fair of me to speculate this.
And staff is all employees, not just teachers?
All employees, certified and non-certified.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought of one other question. It's my understanding that Governor Lamont came out with that vaccination, I wasn't sure if it was just vaccination or medical records of students would be made available to school nurses? Is that accurate?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I believe, and we just had a part of this conversation today, I was asking some of the same questions, Lisa, on the local Health Department call today. It was, it was put out publicly by the governor, and this is not something that was talked about much with us as school district personnel, that by way of verifying COVID-19 vaccinations, the school medical personnel would be able to do that through, I believe it's called WIZ, C-WIZ or Connecticut WIZ. Apparently, and I just learned this today in asking this question of the Health Department, that database of vaccinations already exists for any vaccinations, whether or not doctors, pediatricians, or otherwise, put, upload your child's vaccination records into that system is whether or not they do, number one, or number two, whether or not at some point as a parent, you've given them permission to do so. As a parent, I don't ever remember anyone asking me for permission about that, but that's what we were told today. And so, that, that's there, and now they would be linking up the COVID-19 vaccinations, obviously, with those other vaccinations, but more specifically, that the school nurses would be able to access that information.
I don't have any specific response to that question, except just in general, because I deal with a lot of, you know, confidential student records and all of that, that, as you know, when you enroll your child in school, and every year you have to give them medical updates, and part of that is typically the vaccination records, and I could certainly see that, you know, an additional vaccination is part of that, but I, I don't have specific information about that. Any updates, or what he meant about that, sorry.
Okay. I just, it was something that I read and was curious about, like, are our nurses going to be, you know, have access to a database where it says whether our children were inoculated or not?
But, yeah, and I guess, I don't know, except, I mean, they do know in general what, what your child has been vaccinated for, right? Because when you fill out your medical form and submit it to Avon Public Schools, the vaccination record's part of that. So.
Correct.
Just in that sort of general sense, I'm saying, it kind of makes sense to me, but I have no idea what he meant and what he said, and, yeah.
Okay. I guess in the coming days or weeks, we might get some clarification on that.
Hope so.
Okay.
I can tell you right now that our nurses do not, because we don't have any clarification on what that would even look like. And I just want to circle back just quickly to the mask exemption. My point, Alice, was in the fact that there's a, from a process angle even, there have been some. been some updates by the, on the one hand, the executive order, and on the other hand, what the State Department of Education has put out. They don't necessarily match. That's what I meant by there, even in what constitutes a mask exemption and/or what a process for determining that might look like, which is more from the State Department of Ed than it is from the governor's order. And so my point being that all of us now as school districts are every day calling legal counsel and saying, which do we go by? What do we do with this? And I know that from shipment, at least, any of the districts that work with shipment, we know that the legal team is working on that and putting something out to us so that those discrepancies can be rectified.
Right. Thank you for clarifying that point, and I probably didn't speak to that clearly enough. So their districts can put in place a process for analyzing the request for a mask exemption. And we have gotten, we, our law firm, for example, have gotten requests from a number of districts for how are you advising that we go through this process? And that relates to what I was sort of, you know, anecdotally saying to you about a conversation with the medical provider, this, that. And I was also saying, though, I have not yet experienced a situation where a parent had a verifiable, you know, medical exemption, and the district said, I don't care, no. So that's not the point of the process. The point of the process is to make sure that there isn't abuse by people just, you know, saying anything, trying to get the exemption, and that districts know what should constitute the questions to be asked for a medical mask exemption, right? So the process is not finalized yet.
I think people know the longer we talk, the more questions I have.
So Dr. Carnamola. So hypothetically, I, we present a medical exemption for my child. There's that back and forth with the medical provider about what that looks like. What does that look like for my child? If there's an exemption not to wear a mask, what protections are in place for my child that won't be targeted, you know, and so forth?
The same that would be in place for any other medical exemption, or, you know, other condition, disability, or the like that a student might have. Information is disseminated to, we usually refer to it as a need-to-know basis by staff, which means, you know, as a person working with your child, I might need to know about that, because whatever the, whatever the either condition, disability, and/or exemption is, to be able to effectively work with the child. It's not hung up and communicated with everyone. It's a need-to-know basis. But again, Jeff, this is back to part of what I'm, what I'm speaking to. From a practical standard, I'm not, I'm not getting into the weeds around what should or shouldn't constitute a medical exemption. That's not what I keep coming back to. It's more what does all of this, how does all of this play out for us in practice? And that's what really is still to be determined, because we did manage some of that last year. But it was very few, because the majority of students who would have had a mask exemption last year, generally speaking, a lot of their parents kept them remote, because in most cases, that student was severely immunocompromised and/or multiply disabled, those, you know, kinds of conditions that they felt would not have, they would not have been able to be here and not have a mask on. So many of them, if they could not wear a mask, they were not here, they were remote. So we're in a different situation in some of those regards this year.
Right, because now they have to be in school. Because we can't provide the remote option.
Again, unless.
Unless we go through the PPT or the 504 process.
Correct. And that's why I wanted to be clear about how the two of those match up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what it's going to look like. And I think my downfall always is, as a teacher, I know what it looks like in my building or what it's supposed to look like.
But you don't right now.
And I'm clueless.
And that's what I'm saying, and that's why I, you know, when we sent out the information that we had at the time, with the mitigation strategies and so on, you know, the communications that went out over the last couple of weeks, it's referred to, but there's nothing else with it for you to go to and look at what the process is, except last year's information. And that's what I'm getting at in terms of the State Department of Ed, who really is the one, you know, the governor can make an executive order for things that we have to be mandated to do, but the State Department of Ed also then puts out what the requirements to us are for following that mandate. They just now did that a few days ago, and we met again this morning on our, you know, typical Tuesday call, and there's a number of mistakes in the document they're working to fix now. So that's where we're left, not distributing back out the information.
And I understand things are changing, and you're put in this awkward position, but what I hear in public comments, what I hear in emails, and what I've heard in my own household, is fear of what Monday is going to look like. I mean, I sat and had a conversation with my family for 20 minutes whether or not we want our child on the bus, right? And I think it's the not knowing what it's going to look like for our children. Regardless of everyone's opinion, I think that part is missing. And I understand you don't have the answer, because the state's not giving the answer, but the kids come Monday. And I think that would help so many more people understand what is going to happen.
Well, in the not knowing, I assume you're speaking specific to what a mask exemption would look like, because the rest of the knowing, I mean, that's everything that we've put out. This is what it looks like on the bus, you know, you have to, you're going to do this, this is what our procedures look like, and that's come from lots of the buildings.
But not what is the mask mandate? Because I understand there's a lot there.
No, no, I'm talking about the rest of it. So our buildings have been sending out building-specific information, too, related to, this is recess, this is launch, and so on, so, and we've been doing that to be able to speak to what you're saying. On the mask exemption piece, what I can say to you is, there are very few that I'm aware of that have actually come through and that are somewhere in the process. So what is school going to look like? Much like it did last year. Hopefully better.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for walking us through that. We really appreciate the guidance. A lot of it is a refresher, but it's also just reassuring to know that you are leading the charge and helping us to have another successful year. So thank you. Our next piece is new business. We are looking at the Board of Education Committee meeting dates for school year 2021, 2022. Has anyone seen a date that stands out to them that would not work? Or are we all pretty generally available on the dates that have been provided so that we can approve? Is it okay? All right, do I have a motion to approve the, I guess, Board of Education meetings?
So moved.
All right, thank you, David. Do I have a second? Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye. Okay, passes unanimously, surely. All right. We do have communication from the public again. Was there anyone who did not have the opportunity to speak that would like to at this time? Thank you. So again, it's three minutes, and just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Lee Naugh, and I live on Oak Ridge Drive. I'm wondering.
I'm sorry, repeat the name again, I apologize.
Yes, Lee Naugh.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, well, just as an aside, first of all, with all the email reading and whatnot, first of all, you didn't say their addresses, and also, why are we listening to that rather than having that posted? That takes a lot of time. People are here, can that not be posted, and then more people can come up and ask questions? Does that make sense?
For clarity, they will be posted, they will be in the minutes.
Yes, but all the time spent reading.
It looked like we got through the public comments, I think we did okay with it, but I do respect your position on that.
Well, I think there might have been more. I'm just pointing out, and I just don't understand, too, like, what you're asking for addresses, and then you're not delivering those when you're talking.
They are written in the emails, so I apologize if they weren't read aloud.
Okay, never mind. As far as the question, I was very interested in this gentleman's question, because my head was spinning with it, you know, round and round and round, where there was never an answer, I believe, and it may not be your question, but I thought it might be, and I'm interested in the answer to that, too. If there's a medical exemption, is the child necessarily having to be separated out from the rest of the kids, so that they're, you know, identified, you know, treated differently in the classroom? That's a simple question.
I understand, unfortunately, during communication from the public, we don't have a conversation. I don't know if you want to.
I'm new to this, so excuse me, but it seems to me that we should have a conversation. That way, information is shared and transparent, right?
I understand what you're asking. It's more about decorum and following protocols, but we could certainly, should we get back to her, or do you feel comfortable answering that at this?
So what typically, just to be clear, what typically happens is if we're able to answer it, like, I think you may have noticed, I tried to make sure that we spoke to many of the things we heard in the first public comment, by way of what we talked about up here, and it's part of why I was asking questions related to the same one that you just asked. So why don't we, why don't we do this in terms of?
There's no, there's no information on that that I just asked, nothing?
Right. But in terms of procedure, why don't we wait until everyone has gone through, and then if it's all right with the board, we'll speak back to it when we get closer to board member comments?
Board, is that comfortable?
Just quickly, too, I'd like to mention that with this idea of science and what the best science is and whatnot, I think we all should remember that we live in a society now where information is not that freely distributed and exchanged. We live in a time of censorship. We have to be savvy about that, and we have to look for answers better than we all seem to do. There is a lot of information, a lot of studies, that do not support the health and well-being, you know, idea of masking children. There's, there are a lot of studies about the bacteria, all the stuff that they could just become ill with just by wearing this rag over their face all day. There's a study about babies born during COVID whose IQ, and this was done by Brown University in Rhode Island, by the way, their IQ is something like 30 points lower on average, because they are dealing with adults with this stuff on their face that babies require. Excuse me?
Your time's expired.
Oh, my time's expired. I did want to also ask about CRT, if that's being taught in the Avon schools? I know there's something called social and emotional learning. Is that CRT? Has that ever been discussed here? This is the first time I've been here. Could somebody answer that? No?
Again, when we do, we'll go back to it.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask the board, because all board members have had access to the submitted emailed comments, and they will be attached to the minutes, are we comfortable with allowing public comment and simply attaching these to be read for others that want to see them? They were addressed to the Board of Ed, so we have read them, and so we're doing a service for the public to see them as well. So if we're comfortable with that, then we can continue with public comment. Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right, next.
Hi, I'm Stil Catherine Lewis.
Just one second, Catherine, was there anyone that hasn't spoken yet that wanted to? Okay.
So I'm Stil Catherine Lewis, and I still live at 54 Lord Davis Lane, and an oppression nod to the woman behind me. Yes, critical race theory is being taught at Avon High School, and I was going to address that. We were talking about depression and anxiety in our children, and it is correct that that is an issue with COVID. Critical race theory is specifically being taught in an EC course. It came into Avon High School from, through a course specifically from UConn, and it was being taught appropriately as a lens through which to look at literature. That was pirated in an English 12 or class and taught inappropriately, specifically in my son's class, by an English 12 class. I made this known to the superintendent, and it was addressed very appropriately by her and the principal. My son was removed by that class. It was because it was abusive and by that teacher. But yes, critical race theory is being taught inappropriately in the high school. This is the point that I'm going to make to you. When teach, when kids are already stressed by COVID, the last thing they need is politics in the classroom injected by teachers and abusive practices. Our kids don't need this. They're coming back to school. They don't need name-calling, they don't need to be told they have white privilege, they don't need to be spoken to this way. No child needs to be spoken to this way, ever, okay? And so I'm just asking the board to really ride herd on rogue teachers. No child deserves to be talked down to. They've lost sports, they've lost things they love to do. They need to engage in exuberant mammalian play. They need to, like, tease their principal, they need to enjoy each other. They don't need to be spoken to badly. This transition's going to be hard enough. They need their childhood back. My mother was raised in World War II Europe. She was bombed by Hitler. She died of lung cancer when she was about 50 because of participating in the resistance of the north of France. She still had a great life, okay? COVID is small potatoes, it doesn't kill most kids. My mother, if she was alive today, would say, what is all this hysteria about? Pull up your socks, people, stop your whining, stop being babies. She would say, what is this crying about? You know, this isn't serious. You can go to the store, you can still buy meat, you can still buy bread, for heaven's sake. What is this? This is America. These are the people who saved me from the Nazis. And yes, I can use the word Nazi. Don't call me in the night and threaten me, because I use this word. The Nazis tried to kill my mother for crying out loud. I'll feel free to use this word whenever I want. My mother said, thank God, the Americans came and saved me from these pieces of crap. I'll use that word when I want in America. I love America. But anyway, our kids are coming back to school, and they need to feel good about it. They don't need language arts teachers telling them they're racists. For God's sake, Board of Ed, help our kids love America. Help them love the school, okay? They don't need to be told they're racist, they don't need hate speech. Please, let our kids engage in exuberant mammalian play. Let them have fun. They're children. They don't hate anybody. Thank you.
Okay, so the next section is communication from Board of Education members, but prior to doing that, Dr. Carnamola, did you want to possibly address those questions?
If I may, superintendant, I know this isn't procedure, but thank you for allowing it. Short answer, no, social, emotional learning isn't, really, isn't about critical race theory. I'm happy, we have talked about that at some other meetings, I can't fully go through that tonight, but we are talking more about how to support our students to have a good experience at school, to have the skills necessarily in life, to persevere, resilience, so on. And I'm happy, if you want to be in touch with me outside of the meeting, and I'm sorry, you said it twice, but I still didn't hear the first name, was it Nina? Lee? Excuse me. There's something, there's something making noise behind me, and it's making it harder for me to hear some of you. But I'm happy to reach out and have more of a conversation about that with you, if you like, outside of the meeting, because it's not on the agenda tonight. Back to the mask exemption piece of it, your question is a good one, and that was what I was trying to reiterate via my questions to the attorney and my answers to the same. We have not had conversations about what it looks like for individual students in large class settings who have mask exemptions, to your point. Would we, would the recommendation or the requirement, either way, be that a student had to keep a little bit more distance than the other students? That's, none of that has been discussed at all in a large-scale classroom setting. All of the issues in which we have had to deal with the same in the previous year, we're in smaller settings. So that's one of the examples of what I'm talking about, the difference between what we managed last year in terms of mask exemptions and what we are trying to prepare to manage this year. And I don't know if you want to speak more into that.
Yeah, I just have one additional point, if I may, superintendent, which is that that may be a very individualized answer. You know, depending upon the student, depending upon the grade level, the classes that that student takes, obviously, the goal by the district would be to make it the most inclusive school experience that is safely possible, right? And so it really depends on the nature of the student and the classes, and hopefully it would be individualized to maximize the student's participation. The opposite, the district would work very hard, I assume, to do the opposite of making the child feel different and excluded.
Correct. Thanks for clarifying that. I'm, we're saying the same thing. We have to, we have to look at them case by case. There has been, no, this is wide-scale, this is how you employ it. That was my point, too. Not having any other information to put out. We are right now managing them case by case.
All right, thank you. Now, this is the part of the meeting where Board of Education members can make comments on their own. Again, it doesn't allow for conversation. Is there someone who'd like to go? Laura?
A couple of things first, just as a point of clarification. The reason that the addresses for the letters that were emailed to us and for which the authors specifically asked to have their letters read into the record, their addresses aren't included here because we have them here in the emails. They often write them there, or we have the email addresses, so we're able to identify who they are and how to reach out to them again. If somebody's in the audience and they come up and they want to speak, it is common practice at all town meetings to ask the name of the person speaking and their address. As far as the letters that do come in to us, I read every single letter. Whether the person asks to have it read here publicly at our meeting or not does not separate out, in my mind, the importance of the letter. In August 2020, the Avon Board of Education unanimously passed a number of policies in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, including a policy pertaining to health and safety protocols. Language in that policy states, "Compliance with such health and safety protocols shall be mandatory for all individuals while on school property or participating in a school-sponsored activity, unless a legally recognized exemption or exception applies." Since that time, the wearing of masks in schools, a widely-recognized COVID mitigation strategy worldwide, has somehow morphed into a national debate about the perceived loss of one's personal liberty versus the intentional support of collective responsibility. Many Boards of Education now find themselves faced with a seemingly forced partisan divide over public health. When one becomes a Board of Education member, one is expected to uphold all Avon Board policies, including the Code of Ethics policy, which, among other points, states that each Board member will act as an agent of the state, uphold and enforce all laws, regulations, and court orders pertaining to public schools, and will strive to bring any needed change only through legal and ethical procedures. In an effort to act as a responsible, ethical Board member of the Avon Public Schools, I have and will continue to uphold our policies as part of my legal and civil duty. That being said, I respect and understand that we don't all agree. At the end of the day, though, everybody who's sitting up here, I'm speaking for myself, but I can tell you, we all care about the families and the students and the staff and the members of the community who are here tonight. But our goal is to keep students in school first and foremost, and to keep it safe for all students. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Laura. Jeff?
Last year, I was very proud of what we did. I'm gonna start by, again, I want to thank Mr. Medic, the staff last year, who went to great lengths to sort of figure out what mitigation looks like. And then I appreciate them taking the time to allowing us as sta, as Board of Ed to tour the schools, and you got all my questions. I was in every building, Roberto, and the principals. I appreciate it. And despite all the procedures and precautions I voted on and supported, I chose to keep my child home. We have a very complex medical situation in my home. I have spoken about it part publicly. I've spoken about it privately with the Superintendent and fellow Board members. But I was given the option last year to make the decision for what is the best interest of my child. No one is going to protect my family better than me. And I'm frustrated that I'm feeling restricted on options. The fact that I had to have a conversation when we feel safe sending my child on the bus. This is a tough call for us, and I'm frustrated, and I understand that we can't do anything, and that's what I don't understand. We were supposed to be a voice for our constituents, and it's, it's about allowing individuals to make the medical decisions for their family based upon their individual conditions. I don't want to judge anyone else's situations. I don't want anyone else to judge mine. But now I'm in a situation, and the only alternative I have is withdraw my kid and homeschool or send him with the fear. Real or not, it's irrelevant because it's real to my family, that this fear is going to kill a member of my family because of immunocompromised, stated by our own doctors this week to us. And so that's my frustration. I don't have the right, I don't have the right anymore to decide the outcome for my family, except withdraw from the public schools, and that, it's not unacceptable. And I think that's what we're hearing, and I, and I, I implore the state to use the standards and allow us to use the local data. I raised this question before, right? Let's talk to the Farmington Valley Health District. Let's ask the numbers here in town. Let's have a conversation. I understand we're not experts, but we represent the voices of the people here in town, and we can ask the questions that they may not be able to ask. We have the ability to call these individuals forward and have them explain to us, but this executive order prevents us from even discussing those options, and that is my frustration.
Thank you, Jeff. David?
Okay, a little bit in support of Jeff's comment regarding the frustration. A year and a half ago, when a lot of this started, when it was a matter of emergency, people went along with a lot of mitigation strategies, and there was a lot of voluntary compliance. People didn't know what else to do, and we did the best we could with what we had. A year and a half later into this, we're getting to the point where people want options, but instead they get orders. And we're getting to the point where if parents want to have their rights back, they're going to have to vote for them back. It's really up to the voters to fix this. You can't come to, we can't vote on this and give you your rights back. You have to get them back for yourselves. And in the long run, it is the voters who decide how much authority to delegate to government instead of the other way around, which is what we have now. So please fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? All right, Jackie?
I wanted to also share, tell you, Jeff, that I share your concerns about that. I do hope that as we move forward, the, the Governor and the powers that be will provide options for families like yours especially, and I, I feel badly as a friend of yours to hear, I can hear how painful this is for you to have to make this, this kind of a decision, and really have no decision to make. So I, I understand that, and I, I share your frustration about that. I want to thank Chairperson Schute for her stellar leadership. This has been a really hard year and a half, as well as, you know, Bridget, Donna, Roberto, the whole team, Susan for doing such really fantastic work and for propping us up as a district at some times when it just seemed almost impossible. I also want to thank people who came out and spoke tonight. I am really grateful to have heard from every single person. I've learned a lot tonight. I tried to keep an open mind. I, I want to be the kind of person that can truly learn from others, and that's what I strive to do, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight, coming out and, and sharing their thoughts. The pandemic has been hard on all of us, but none have suffered more than those families decimated by loss. Early on in the pandemic, many Avon families were impacted, both young and old alike. I attended drive-by support events for those families. We prayed for them, and we tried to imagine how they will continue on, as I know many of you did. Their pain is always in the forefront of my mind. I'm always aware that we, as Board members, are expected to act in the best interest of the students and also the wider community. We all have lessons to learn here, I know I certainly do, while simultaneously looking out for each other. As a Board, we have taken action on many items that are solely intended to protect our students from the what-ifs in the world. We have invested in robust security. We have hired the best and the brightest. We have implemented policies that protect the vulnerable, and we have invested in programs that provide broad experiences for our students. We have tried to mitigate any unpredictable variable and make the district the best that we can, knowing it will still never be perfect. So for me, going forward, my North Star is going to be the students. The first day of school is right around the corner. My hope for them is that they can greet the new year with excitement and curiosity, the fun of seeing old friends and making new ones, meeting teachers, comparing school supplies, and high-fiving their favorite custodian. I know everyone in the district is ready and anxious to welcome them back. I believe we are truly in this together, one big Falcon family, and while we have differences, I am hoping, and I know, that we will find common ground as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Lisa?
My glasses keep fogging up, so I gotta pull it down. Sorry. Although there are many differing views and opinions regarding the pandemic, where it came from, how it was handled, the efficacy of vaccine, the threat level to certain age groups, and how to best balance safety versus individual liberties, people on each side of these issues can find credible sources to support their arguments. Some will claim their views are supported by science, others by statistics. Some will dismiss opposing opinions because, in their view, those opinions are tainted by politics. Despite all of these differences, we are a community and must keep the end goal in sight to keep Avon a thriving town with a successful school system. Avon, in comparison to other towns, has a very high vaccination rate, approximately 80%, while other towns and cities have yet to get to 50%. Avon also has a low transmission rate. In fact, in our school district, to date, we have no transmission at all. This, again, will bring varying, varying opinions of how this was accomplished, and more importantly at this time, how it will be maintained. All of the decision-making power has been seized by one individual, our Governor. Now, there are those who are looking towards elected officials on this Board to disregard the orders. As much as, as much as some of us may feel that the executive branch have overstepped its boundaries and had hoped that the decision-making would have been relegated to each town, that did not happen. Whether we like it or not, we, as a Board, are not empowered to override the state orders. If we had the ability to create our own plan, I believe we could mitigate risk while still allowing parents to exercise their parental rights. Employing vaccines, wellness checks, periodic testing and guidance about what masks are best to protect the wearer are legitimate tools. I take my position very seriously and feel that as an individual and as a Board, we must represent all constituents. But as things stand now, we do not have the ability to create a plan that is outside the one-size-fits-all executive orders. I regret not being able to effect change in this instance. However, I can still say what I believe. I believe that these decisions are best made at the local level rather than at the state or federal level, and parents are best situated to know what is best for their children. For many, that includes wearing a mask, and for some, it does not. As for those that say allowing one child not to wear a mask puts others at risk, I would say many cloth masks and ill-fitted paper masks on fidgety children will not reduce the risk nearly as much as making sure your own child has a well-fitted, effective, quality mask that filters the virus from the air your child breathes. This, along with vaccines for those who are eligible to get them, social distancing, staying home if exposed or sick, will greatly mitigate risk. And although some think that parents should not have the right to seek medical or religious exemption, I will advocate that those with a good faith need for an exemption should be able to retain that right. I will do everything in my power to ensure that we continue to provide a safe and respectful environment as we ensure a quality education in math, science, language arts, history, the arts, athletics, and civics, while also respecting parents' right to provide guidance on the rest. What I ask in return is quite simple. First, that everyone continue to provide the Board with feedback and suggestions. I can only speak for myself when I say I appreciate hearing from you, because in the end, I recognize that I am a representative of those who put me here, and my job is to amplify your voices. Second, remember, we are a community that sometimes has differing views, and everyone deserves and has the right to be heard with respect and an open mind. It is my hope that we can return to a time when people can disagree without being disagreeable or expressing disdain for those with a different view. With that, I say goodnight and wish everybody a very successful school year.
Thank you, Lisa. Jason?
Sure, thank you, Deb. You know, I think I would, I would like to really pick up kind of where Lisa left off. All of this boils down, to me, to community, right? We're a small town. We mostly know each other. I'm, I'm sure I know most of the people left out there tonight. And we're in an interesting situation. I mean, I don't think any one of us, when we, when we got into this position, you know, foresaw what was going to be happening with COVID and masks, and, you know, it's difficult because we are a tight-knit community, and I, I appreciated the comments from both perspectives tonight. I think it's important that we listen to everyone's perspective. Like Lisa said, I think it's important we be respectful of our differences. We're going to have differences, and they're not necessarily going to be political. As people and as a community, we are going to have differences. It's going to happen, and we need to be respectful of each other. That's something we need to teach our kids. I mean, we need to lead by example in that, in that way in particular, right? Even if we have differences, let's be respectful to each other. In terms of how we've handled this whole situation, you know what? It's been extraordinarily difficult, and I think the group of us as a whole, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. I don't think any one of us, either side of the aisle, has been politically motivated. I think this group has tried to do, in their hearts, the best that they can for the community and for our students. Not everyone in the community is going to agree with me or, or, or everyone on this Board, but we, we're trying our best, absolutely. You know, I applaud the efforts that the Superintendent and the administration and all of the, all of the staff has put in over the last, what has it been? Year and a half now? I mean, nobody, nobody could have predicted this situation, and everyone is doing the best that they can under the circumstances, under the rules that we're under right now, trying our best to, to, to follow the legal obligations we have. I truly believe, and maybe I'm naive, that all of our hearts, this Board, the community, the people still here at 10:30 or wherever the heck time it is right now, you know, I, I think our hearts are all in the right place, and we need to figure out a way to stick together, be reasonable, support each other, and get through this. I, you know, I'm praying like everybody else that the end is near, so, you know, I think the bottom line is, whether it's the school, the town, let's remain a respectful community and support each other. So that's my hope going forward, and I hope we can continue to make strides forward.
Thank you, Jason. After hearing all the Board comments, I do feel compelled to offer a little bit of clarity for the quote that was mentioned in the paper regarding what we see our role as on the Board of Ed and our commitment to the safety and security of all of our students and staff. As soon as a student gets on the bus in the morning or enters one of our school buildings, they are in our care, and it is up to the Board of Ed to support the efforts made in the buildings by our administrators and our staff to protect your students and to keep them safe. So that is a role of guardianship in that regard. I would never presume to parent your child. I would never take that right from you in that regard, but we have to make decisions that support the safety and security of all students and staff when they are within our care. That is what we're here for. That is what we're here to do. So I hope that offers a little bit, a little bit better understanding of what the comment was meant to say. At this time, we will move into an executive session. Can I have a motion to move us in? And we will invite in Dr. Carnamora, Mr. Medic, Dr. Vusak and Ms. Russo. And do we invite in? No? Okay, so Ms. Alfano, you're released. In order for us to hold the executive session, it is just us on the stage. Can I have a motion to-
Motion to move into executive session.
Okay, Laura, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, at 10:10.